Welcome everyone to our four o'clock work session. Here on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Month is half over, or the year's half over is kind of crazy how fast time flies anymore. Um, so we're gonna turn the time over to Kate.
So your amended RFPs that you requested were in your packet? Discussion. It's not in the packets, can't be in the public packets.
Yeah, they're separate. It's, it was in the email that she sent, so um. Before we get too far into this. Got an email today from Marsha White with the Office of Economic Opportunity. Um, she and Commissioner Blocker had, had spoken about some of our plans that we were doing, and she mentioned that the EDA Economic Development Administration has disaster supplemental grants. Um, that are available to help with construction projects and, and non-construction projects. That program um is administered by the EDA. They do have a local representative that administers it. We set a meeting with him next Thursday. Commissioner Blocker and I will attend and I'll educate and, and avoid that discussion. There is a possibility that that grant program would provide eighty percent of the cost. We would have to match with twenty percent for potential of a fire station and other costs up to and including equipment staffing. So it's only available to communities that have had a disaster in the last several years. Morgan County is one of those because we had a flooding disaster in two thousand and twenty-three. So um, the program has been allocated one point five billion in funding. There are obviously typically some strings attached when it's federal money, so there's some questions we want to answer before we go too far down that road. Um, number one, I'm concerned about timeline. I want to make sure that this is something we can do fairly quickly and, and the I had another neighbor in Croydon just last week notify me that they're, they got notification that their insurance, homeowner's insurance was being canceled. So that's six that I'm aware of that have been canceled, so time is of the essence. I'm concerned about that. The other portion is um, sometimes federal money comes with a lot of extra studies and extra costs. And if we find out that it's going to cost us just as much to do all the studies and pay twenty percent of it versus just paying for it, I think we ought to at least consider, you know, that. Um, but I think it's worth asking the questions and determining before we completely move forward. I don't know yet. The other piece that I want to find out is if this is a situation where they will, you know, give us a grant funding after the fact, if we go ahead and do it and then they, they reimburse us, or if this isn't upfront money, I don't understand that and it wasn't in the documentation, but I think that's something we ought to understand as well. Either way, it's worth at least investigating and determining if that's a viable path because if it is, and we only have to spend twenty percent of the cost out of our budget from the this program would cover the other eighty percent. I think that's a huge win for for all of us, so. My suggestion is before we award a bid on this, let's give us a week to do some investigation on this and then at our next meeting. Determine.
Can we temp? Well, this isn't an action item.
This isn't an action item now. We can still talk about that. I just when it comes to action item, that's my suggestion is that we we postpone the award of the bid until our next meeting so that we can find out about this program and determine if it's a viable solution.
And if there's any other ideas, like it even covers, you know, fiber optic internet, um disaster recovery coordinator. A lot of different things you think outside the box. But yeah, we just need a little more information on it.
Yeah, so there's um, non-construction projects to build local capacity and prepare for future implementation projects, readiness projects, including funding for recovery strategies, disaster recovery coordinators, or other capacity building activities and pre-development expenses. Um standalone construction and non-construction projects that help communities recover from major disasters and advance recovery and growth, improving economic outcomes. Um, and I mean, I think one thing that's, that's pretty critical to that particular area of the county is that in a, in a flooding event, we have had flooding events where that part of the county is cut off. At least the bridge is flooded over with water. We've had that twice since I've lived up there. In the last fifteen years, and so I think that's something that we can certainly use in, in part of our application for. So um, anyway. And the fact that that, that station would help service the one of only two cement plants in the state of Utah and one of only a handful in the western United States is also a pretty big deal. Speaking of which, um, we had a community, so Devil Slide does a community. What do they call it, Boyd? It's a it's, it's folk, I forget what they call it, but it's, they do it every year or two, and it's, it's stakeholders in the community that have an interest in the cement plant, and they give an update on what's going on with the plant and, and their corporation, and then we talk about what's going on in the community and, and how we kind of fit together. Boyd and I attended that meeting last week and um spoke to them about our fire station project, and they aren't interested in participating with us in that in some form. I don't know what that will look like yet, but they're definitely interested in that. We, we got a commitment from the plant manager that they want to help, so. Anyway, I think those are all great news and we're on the right track.
Mike, please.
We're going forward with, with staffing up there, so volunteers. So we're gonna have uh, an EMT class here at the station. Uh, it'll start in uh, September. And we're canvassing Croydon area to try to get people to join. So we're gonna pers, we're just gonna continue with that. So when the station does get up, we'll have some people to respond.
Awesome, okay. Do, do we want to talk about those bids though, here, Matt? Just get a thought on that, or what do you want to do?
I probably would rather not necessarily if we're not going to award it. Yes, I guess we're not going to accept any other bids anyway, though. I've got our three bids correct, so yeah, we could talk about it.
I resent the email, so it should be at the top of your inboxes. While they're looking at that, and you're up there, um, just wanted to say thank you for bringing that water tender out to the fairgrounds when I'm quite first, so that our it's more susceptible to lands have water.
Yes. Anytime.
So um help me, tell me if I'm wrong, but I as, as far as I can see the, there's only two bids that actually qualify. Correct?
You know, talking to me.
It don't, it doesn't qualify if it's not complete, that's what I'm saying. If, if they haven't bid it the way we asked them to bid it, it doesn't. It doesn't qualify. Is that correct?
That was my understanding since we did ask for ground uh remediation of the site. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and we asked for two by six walls, we asked for footing foundation, we asked for um trust, a trust system. And um conventional trust system and, and from what I can tell, one of them didn't bid it that way. There, the other two did bid it that way.
You would be the expert.
I'm just kind of refreshing my memory from the other day. But yeah, the one was certainly different. Trying to remember which one was which. I tried to do my little draw on there.
One didn't even have insulation on it. If we're gonna have a building and we put in A, A, B, H, H, B, A, C.
It has to be insulated. We got water in trucks and stuff.
I thought I saw insulation on all of them.
My notes that you have.
How did I end up with Wayne's notes?
Because I didn't download it.
Oh.
He just wrote directly into the packet.
Oh. I could do that. I went and thought I put.
I enjoyed it, actually. I thought it was great.
Something I was trying to read, Brian. I couldn't quite figure it out.
Well, he can read, he can read it all.
I thought I wrote it. I couldn't read it.
So.
Oh, you could.
I think line item number five and six on the bid that you talked about was the, the one that I'm suggesting doesn't meet the criteria.
Which one is that again? Sorry.
So.
Can we number these or something?
Bid number two.
Okay, so just do one, two, and three.
Thank you. That's the one that you say probably doesn't.
Correct. And the, the, the concrete's not the right thickness, the, there's several things on there that
because we decided we need six inch.
Six inch concrete.
So I mean, you kind of look in, what, right, the concrete, you look in front of our fire station here and it's just destroyed. It's just those heavy trucks constantly. It's like a four inch slab is knocking the support, those vehicles and.
So I, anyway, I think it, it'll be easy to award it at the next meeting, so I, I do, I agree if we can get eighty percent of it paid for. My question to you, Mike, was that, is that the only thing that we can do? Or could we combine two fire stations? And do eighty?
Let's talk about it, like, I mean, I think it's worth asking, because if we're gonna do it, it might be.
And.
Maybe we could do both. I don't know. We ought to at least ask about it.
Okay.
And I think that's worth. We'll find out.
That covers our whole, that would cover our whole county with.
Which would be amazing. And, and eventually I think we need to do that, so.
So if we can get eighty percent of it.
Yeah, and get two for the price of one or whatever, that would be huge.
Which especially with the bill that the legislature just passed this year with all the wildland fires, OUA, that type of stuff.
And that may change our wildland urban interface a bit if we have enough stations throughout the county.
Oh, for sure. Yeah.
So that's something to consider, and I think it's also, we ought to consider, you know, the impact that might have on our fire schedule ordinance if that's maybe that means we can change that square footage up a little bit because now we have better protection or we have more tenders or whatever.
If we get some more water tenders in place that can be staffed, you know, we can definitely bring the square footage up on that for sure.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So I think we need to think about all of that, and it feels like the time is very ripe to get that done. I, I don't want us to wait too long to start moving on this, but.
So if we, most of the grants that I've ever written, they want shovel-ready stuff. So with the grant, would we have to use the plans that uh, someone has submitted for a bid? That how we would work it, because we really don't have any.
Yeah, that's a good good point. I, I guess we would because it's a design build, so my thought is we would probably award. And we'll have to figure out how the grant works, but we would probably award the the bid and then submit that as part of the.
Yeah, they'd want us to submit plans with it. I think with everything we have in place with the plans, I think you'd have a pretty good shot at that grant.
Because I, I can tell you right now that uh, this basically fits an airport hangar. And, and we have lots of those that we can get stamped again. So for that same size, they can reduce it, engineer it, stamp it, so.
I think getting the plans would be a big deal. This is fair.
Like six hundred bucks to get them redone and stamped.
And I suspect it's probably one of the lower cost projects.
Oh, it'd be.
But, but it's high impact for our community.
Well, it's huge impact for you.
Question on the uh, second.
Number two?
Number two.
Uh huh.
And there is nothing in there uh at least from what I can determine, maybe you guys saw it when I did it. An upper level. One that the third one has. Level. Chins or something?
Mezzanine space.
Yeah. So there's a difference in those two. Two or three. Or not.
Yeah, I think what they were trying to do is create some storage space for us. So there wouldn't be a stuff, a lot of stuff laying around the floors around the trucks.
So there's a second, there's one of those, know the one bit does have it. So restroom facilities and everything else. The other one does you guys that are in, you know, did construction, maybe you can tell me what, what I'm missing.
So you're gonna have to say that again for me.
Say.
What line item are you talking about on the bid?
Where I'm trying to find it, it's not there. It's got stub utilities out of building. Or drain.
So are you talking about bid number two? That's a disqualified.
No, not that one. Okay, there's one, two, we disqualified three. So it'd be one.
But you're on bid one?
I'm on bid one.
Yeah, that one.
I think that one doesn't include a mezzanine space.
We never asked for that.
Asked for it, but it's something we ought to consider if we want it.
Because the second, the number three bid did do that. And they've got everything in there that we've asked for. And we didn't ask specifically, we wouldn't ask them design and build.
Well.
And so.
It automatically has a mezzanine on top if there's a if there's a, it's, I don't think it's a livable mezzanine. It's something you could store stuff on top of.
You've probably got about four or five feet is all you go.
Everything above, above the office and bathroom is going to be a mess, and that's what they're calling it.
This one does include a railing for that.
Oh, does it?
Space, so.
Which one is number?
Number three?
Number three does.
Okay. Well, I, I from what I can see, it's kind of a no-brainer because there's both of those are pretty all-inclusive and there's a little bit of, so.
Is there a reason we couldn't award it and just not like pick them bigger and just not act in the award until the funding is established?
Yeah.
And I guess we could address that when it gets to that action item.
That would also, I think, show when we go to apply for the grant funding if in fact that's a viable option, that we're, we're ready and we're moving forward with it.
Yeah, you're complete, right? Shovel-ready.
Um, there's also some costs that we haven't included here that we probably ought to include. Like some surveying costs and fencing costs. Which can be do, done separate. Doesn't have to be the same contractor or anything, but when we do the grant thing, we need to think about and maybe some additional paving costs because we're just doing an apron out. We need to pave out to the road and maybe some parking paving, things like that we have to consider for the so.
Means there's one part of the bid number three that has like the advanced doors and openers come with a lifetime warranty on normal wear and tear like most lifetime warranties, which this includes labor. So something to look at.
Well, that's the low bid anyway.
Yeah. It's the low bid, the, the most comprehensive one that you've been talking about is the lowest.
I thought his revised bid was different.
It's.
Because the second bid, you look at the, the second bid that we had, the up, up updated one on June fifteenth, it went up.
Oh, this is the June eleventh I'm looking at.
You're looking at June ten, right?
Yeah.
I see a June ten and a June eleven on the other one.
Second.
I have an updated on Sunday. So confused then.
Well, okay, so it says updated there, but when you open it up.
It's the same.
It, it shows um the data on it itself. It's.
Oh.
It's May.
May eleventh. Or June eleventh, excuse me.
June eleventh, and that's why not.
Yeah, but it's still a low bid.
That is.
I don't, I didn't see it change. Oh. I don't have that bid.
It should be, you have six different, sorry, go back.
Oh, maybe the, maybe it wasn't uploaded to this, then.
Yeah, I haven't, I was just opening it up.
So it's not the one that's on the, the drive file? Drive file? Is that right?
It's the one Kate said. It's one I wrote on. She, she wrote, that's what you, that's that's what I have too.
You have this number here?
That's what I have. I don't have what he has.
I'm willing to do that too.
Well, he has one that he says.
So while we're looking, Mike, do you, does the parking lot need to be engineered? So you have to have an engineer involved, or is that something we just?
Number ones, I don't know. We ought to, maybe we ought to have the county engineer look at it and tell us what he thinks we ought to do.
So I think so, because it has to be able to support the seventy-five thousand pounds. It's a drain, right? Yep, all of that.
So we'll at least consider that as part of our, sorry.
Right, would, would that part of it have to go up for bid also?
Yeah.
So I'm sure it's over the five thousand.
We can get an engineer's estimate.
Same.
So it's the last.
Is it? Is it the last of the original three?
Page seven. Which is page number one, basically. Would the commission like me to print that out for the election or the, do you want me to just go print copies before the action item? So that we can move on to the addressing, addressing that part of the work session? Okay, I'll go ahead.
Ours all look like that. All, ours, both ours.
Okay, gotta go scroll, oh, you can't scroll.
Oh, so it's up. Oh, 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 he's got, he's got his original and his.
Yeah.
Other in the same.
Others.
That's why it's so long. I just scrolled.
That's right, dude.
Oh.
Page seven.
Okay, so it's, it's halfway down, Mike.
That makes sense.
Well, that isn't, that isn't.
Well, so it isn't necessarily the low bid based on.
Okay.
Yeah, based on that, it's not the low bid.
So I don't think we ought to award it until.
Well, let's, let's talk to it when we get to that action item, but yeah. No, I don't think he did, but we found, we found our.
No, yeah, we found our mistake. He included both in the same email.
We just shot to the bottom.
Yeah.
It's like reading the back page of the book.
Yep.
Based on everything.
That's why line stays up till one in the morning or evenings. I don't.
Josh, who's taking the non-earlier conversation? Who's spearheading yours?
Okay.
Okay.
So if we don't award it, then it's gonna, is it gonna bother the Grant Foundation?
We don't know yet.
Don't know, okay.
We got to where we get to the action item.
All right, thank you.
He's, no, he'll be gone for a minute. He's got a church issue. He's gotta go.
Oh, okay. Uh, so Wausau Civil has been doing our addressing of subdivisions and uh, new builds uh, for approximately a year and a half now. When they started, uh, there was no standardized address grid that had been in use. So they created an address grid um which revealed a lot of errors. Um how many do you think on the major?
Uh, I think we're about a hundred and seventy or so.
So we have about a hundred and seventy major errors uh, addressing where the addresses either go backwards from where they're supposed to go, or they're just so far out of the grid that they need to be changed for emergency services. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to Thomas. Uh, he's going to talk a little bit about uh, the methodology as, and then go through um. Uh, did you, did we provide a handout? For them?
It's in the packet.
Okay, uh, so in the packet, we provided you a kind of a short list of how we address, why we do it. He's going to go through that and then he's going to bring up places on, in, in Morgan County uh, and explain why they're so far out of the grid.
Well, good afternoon. Uh, again, I'm Thomas Good. Um so on that first sheet of the packet, uh, kind of talking about what is it? How does addressing work? All that kind of stuff. That way you guys can read through it as I'm going through all these things, but um, essentially the way addressing is done, specifically here in Utah, it's about eight hundred address points per mile, and so uh, we use the public land survey system because those are generally a mile by a mile. They're not perfect always, but um and that's how we built the survey system. Uh, we went ahead and piggybacked off of Morgan City's um, origin, which is at zero, zero, so it's at. So it's at mains, right here, Main Street and, uh, State Street.
Young.
Young, you're right, you're on.
State.
I'm sorry. I should be better about that. Yes. Um, so we based it off of that so that we would fit in with what they have, right? Um, since they already have a, a system. Um, and just the way it works, as you go north from that origin, it works exactly like you'd think. We go from a hundred north to two hundred north to three hundred north, same on the southeast and west. Um, so you should see numbers getting larger as you get away from, from that origin. Um. I don't have it up, but on the packet, there's this little thing, um, that helps to establish, okay, if a road's going generally north, south, we're going to put, um, odd numbers on the west side, even numbers on the east side. Um, it does flip when you get to the south side, and so that's all kind of here, and that's a lot of the. I guess methodology that we, that we use to like set this up, start looking at it, um, all that kind of stuff. Um, and there are some things for irregular roads and I'll show you a few, uh, here today, but, um. For roads that don't, which most of Morgan County, Morgan Cities is not, right? We're very northeast and northwest, uh, directional roads, but, um. Typically you'll pick, you know, which one is it going more toward? Is it tending more north, south? Uh, or is it turning more east, west? And then you kind of assign addresses that way. And then we have a few that, um, we've got ring roads and we also have some roads that kind of travel up and down. They turn back on themselves. Um, and working with Josh, uh, I mean. You have to break that at some point, right? You don't want to continue coming, say thirty-one hundred, work all the way around, you know, but thirty-seven hundred here, right next to your thirty-one hundred west, right? Um, so you kind of have to make it make sense. Um, and that's for several things, obviously, and you guys know what's going on, but if you're okay. And are there any questions before I get in and start looking at the map, start giving you a little tour? Um. So the first one I'll kind of go over and please forgive me, I should be better about the subdivision names and I'm just not, but I'll show you the ring road one, um. Very first. So what we have here is we have these black and white numbers. Those are the ones that are currently assigned. And these yellow ones are the ones that. I've kind of calculated, kind of come up with, um, but you can kind of see how we generally get bigger as we come around here, continue to get bigger. It does start to drop back, but we end up with thirty-three, almost thirty-four hundred. And again, right next to that, thirty-one eighty-three. Again, as we go from that origin west, they should typically get larger, um, and that's, I mean, that helps with navigating and everything like that. Um. And so what I've kind of done is obviously these, these ones here, there's thirty-two fifty-three, forty-one and twenty-nine, um. Leave them alone, right? They, they, they kind of fit, they work well. Um, but we had some natural breaks here, and so. Kind of renamed this road. Now we renumber based on this new road name, and it doesn't even have to necessarily be a new road name, um. Can't remember what I called it, but there's Ring Road North and Ring Road South, basically, um, to tell the difference between the two. Um. And so that's kind of one of the, one of the ones here in this area. I've got a couple here. Where we're just, we're just way off. This one is actually, uh, if you look at the numbers, we continue to get larger as we go south. So this is exactly backwards from what it should be, uh, with one kind of in the middle that's what it, where it should, where it should happen, so. Not a full swap of addresses there, but I recalculated, um, so that now we're getting larger as we continue north. Um. This one here is another one where we just kind of continued getting larger as we traveled along the road. Um, but you can see here, we've got sixty-two ninety-four north, which fits in with the grid really very well. Um, but then their neck, their backyard neighbor is at sixty-seven oh eight north. Um, so we're, we're talking five hundred almost, well, I guess four hundred address points, just by virtue of being a backyard neighbor. Um, so these are kind of some of the things we're talking about. Um. There's one down here I wanted to show you in particular. Um. This one's labeled as a thirty-one sixty-one west, but we can see other west addresses are thirty-three forty-three, thirty fifty, thirty-three fifty-eight, excuse me. And as we get further, it goes thirty-six, thirty-three. Um, so for some reason in here, this one just goes from a higher number to a lower number and then back up to the higher numbers, um. So it doesn't even follow a pattern on this one. Um.
How did the numbers get assigned in the first place?
I can tell you how it was when I got my house. They says, pick a number.
Yeah, it shouldn't happen like that.
Yeah, I know. Um, but being a mailman, I was able to figure it out which side it should be on.
So, uh, my department has typically been in charge of addressing properties. Tell you why, um, somebody, if another department wants it. Um, typically we'll assign the addresses at the time of the subdivision. Uh, or we'll assign it when they submit their building permits for a house where there's no structure there, uh, because there shouldn't be an address on a vacant piece of property. Um, that, I don't know if that happened prior to me. The one that he just talked about was addressed correctly five years ago. And the property owner came in, requested an address change, which destroyed the grid, didn't follow it anymore. Uh, and my predecessor approved that for, for some reason. I, I don't know why he approved that. It shouldn't have been approved. It's, it's more than two hundred address points off of where it should be. Uh, which is not good for emergency services, E nine eleven, um, there's, you know, they, they. They don't want to respond to a place where they have to search and look. I mean, it's dangerous for people that are having health issues and stuff like that, so. The goal is to get all the addresses that are off, back in line with the grid so that we can upload that data and, and it, it actually follows uh, the standard addressing procedure, um, but that's how that one got it.
So the cottages he just showed in Mountain Green, those addresses were assigned by the planning department?
Uh, yep, they would have been assigned by my department when the, uh, when the subdivision was submitted. And the way they addressed it, they just made a circle. So, I mean, a couple of them are, are okay, but most of them, it's not supposed to circle around and get larger as you go back.
I have the hardest time finding addresses in there, just so you know.
Josh, to be clear though, the guy didn't pick his address. He was assigned an address because he changed his driveway from the circle to the street.
No, he picked the address. We didn't assign that. The thirty-one sixty-one, I don't know, I don't think my predecessor.
Why would he pick an ad, why would he pick that address out of his ear, you know?
I have no idea. There's a couple of people that wanted their addresses, uh, because the number was significant to them.
Okay, well, I know that he cha, they changed it because he went from the circle to the road. It wasn't just that he went in and said, I want to change.
Alright, that's, that's great. I don't know if that's, that's right or not. I'd have to talk to my predecessor. I just know it doesn't follow the grid. And for emergency purposes, it should be changed.
Okay, well, we're going to have to discuss it because it, it creates a problem for us as a county.
Another question. So do they base the address? Cause I, down below in other areas, sometimes you see like the front of the house is facing this street. But the driveway comes off of that street. So is it, is it based on the access to the property or how do they?
No, typically subdivisions are given two address points that they can choose from. If they're a corner lot, they're given an address on one street and an address on the other and they can pick which one they want.
Okay. I was just curious, it's like, I know sometimes I've come down the road and I'm like, this is the road, but where's the driveway? Like, I don't, so I was just curious how they, how they pick that, so.
And I would just say, I know, I know it is a problem because we keep getting phone calls. I mean, the recorders obviously get phone calls. We get phone calls about, um. Residents coming to us saying, hey, the US Postal Service is not, does not recognize this address. They say it's wrong. Or, um, sometimes it's the water districts that come to them and say, hey, your addressing's wrong. We can't really do anything until you get it fixed. Um, there's been quite a few that we fixed fairly recently, um, with the help of the homeowner, but if we clear this up and work with these, these organizations, I think we can make it better for the county, even though there are problems and it is going to be difficult to get there.
So that, I guess my question to you is, is in, have you done this for other counties?
I've never, no.
Okay, so lots of people have pillars with their addresses blocked in them. Lots of people have that done into their homes.
Yes, sir.
That's a problem. And, and so they come to us and say, you guys gave us the number. We put it in our home, we put it in our pillar. I'm not going to pay to have that taken out of my pillar. That's a problem. So.
And I'm, I'm willing to step away and just call it, you know, like, oh, there you go. We'll let the postal service report, sort this out. You know what I mean? Like, I'm okay with that, but.
Okay. I, I do think though, I, I'm just thinking liability wise. There are, well, the times that we can amend a subdivision application or make a requirement after they've already gotten to a certain point is for health, safety. And so. I mean, I, I, I guess it's a balance of what the commission wants to do or give direction on as if there's a fire or there's an emergency called in and five minutes, ten minutes trying to find the address because it is, it doesn't follow the grid. What's the liability for injury, wrongful death, those types of lawsuits that come in? And so I, I think it's a balance. It's not something that should be decided without a lot of care and consideration into what's the cost as well to not making a change for.
So Boyd, how do you guys find an address?
Can Boyd, can you come?
I can't tell you how many times we've struggled to find an address.
Um, so do you use Google Maps? What do you do?
We, we use several apps and they get us close. And then, uh, one of them's off or it's like we're six hundred east and seven hundred east. Um, that's an issue where we're not sure which way to go. And then seven hundred east turns into, what's that? Turns into something else, but it's the same road.
I guess my question is, is if we, if we were to adopt this, is that foolproof?
I couldn't answer that, man.
Okay, I just, I just wondered. I've done work for one of the gentlemen, so I, and I, and I have talked to him, so. I know I can Google, put him in Google Earth and, and I can go right to his home. So that's why I was asking you, do you use Google Earth? Do you use?
We do, we use Google Earth. We use, uh, several different apps.
So I'm just wondering if it's, this is make, going to make it perfect? Probably not. Or if we're doing this for to make a big problem. So I just want to, I just want to look into all the avenues.
For sure, and I, I agree with Garrett. You know, there's some liability there if we don't do anything at all.
I, I think the other thing to consider too is as the county grows, I, I think that probably those that ran on the ambulance or the fire for decades and decades when Morgan wasn't so big. They're like, oh, well, I know where that person lives, not because of the address, just because we're a small community. Um, the, the worry that I see liability wise, the long term is that we are growing quickly. We have more building application or permits and applications, uh, subdivision applications. We're just trending um, in, in the direction. We have new EMTs coming on. We have new firefighters coming on. And I just think that the problems that we maybe haven't had because of the familiarity and the, the length of time people have been at the fire station. I see that changing just since I've been here. I see it changing and the people that come into my office and the, the problems that arise or the questions that come in. So that, that's where I see, you know, anything life safety. I'm always more in favor of heading towards changes that, that protect life safety. Uh, but, but once again, we have to look at the, the liability and it's something that I think should be considered deeply and, you know.
How long ago did that address change, that one individual one that we're talking about?
And, and so let me ask you this question. So if you changed mine to nine eighty-nine instead of six forty-six, how does Google know that?
Uh, I believe, uh.
I have the answer to that question. Actually, Charles probably has the answer to that question. Charles? Want to explain to us how our addressing works?
How we upload to community hours?
I'm just saying, if you change all these addresses, Google doesn't just go, oh, Morgan changed the addresses.
No, so usually they rely off data updates from like Thomas or myself. So. Uh, Boyd showed me Ice by Fire. OpenStreetMap. So that's a crowdsourced kind of like mapping platform like Google Maps or Apple Maps where anyone can go and add an address. So. That's the one that's used for nine-one-one, um, as far as I know. But then, oh, Apple Maps and Google Maps, we can like update them whenever. So. If we were to like go through and re-address the whole county, we could provide them with a data set where they go in on their backend and change everything super easily.
So how do you get it to where? I look at this on my own house.
Sure.
Um. My house has been in twenty-six years, it's been thirty-three seventy, South Highway sixty-six. I put that into my GPS to navigate to my home and it does not recognize it.
It gets you close though, right?
No.
No, not even?
Not even close.
Yeah.
It requires me to put in thirty-three seventy, Utah sixty-six. So how is that changing without my rec, my knowledge?
Well, so that's like the tokenization on the backend of whatever mapping program you're using. So whether it be Apple Maps, Google Maps, they use their own little data set where they have rules as to how they like name everything. So the way you reference like sixty-six is not going to be the same as like the proper tokenization, full name of that road. That's recognized from a mapping software, right? The, I'm not saying it because I'm not from Morgan, so I don't really know the, you know, specific road names, but the local reference name of a road isn't necessarily the one that's going to be used all the time on the backend, if that makes sense. So.
So, so the question that I have with it is, okay. Utah sixty-six versus Highway sixty-six, and the Utah sixty-six, then we use south, just uses Utah sixty-six. So when you're looking in the maps, it's okay, but when you put it into navigation, it doesn't show up. And so, and then if it does, Highway sixty-six is in someplace in Iowa. Yeah, and so, so how do we know what our address should be and is?
Well, I, I don't think it's so much that is, there's, there's no way for us to know what system data set your Tesla is pulling from.
I know, it's from Tesla.
It's so like, we already update Apple Maps, Google Maps, OpenStreetMap, like those are the three main ones, so we can't.
So I'm just trying to figure out, okay. How can we straighten out the problem?
Well.
And other than, like you say, go through the whole county, change everybody, get it all straight, and then who's going to pay the cost?
So, well, i- it's kind of a relatively simp, simple process on, in paper, right?
Okay.
So on paper, if someone were to make a change, then some, whether it be Thomas or myself could push it over to Apple or Google being like, hey, update y'all stuff. We've done it a couple of times. Um, so it's like been something we've kind of gotten in the swing of establishing, I guess, as a process, but that would be something that we'd do on the norm is just whenever we have like these address affidavits that Josh and Thomas are talking about potentially having to do if they were to go through and do this whole readdressing. You can pull a list of seven hundred addresses, make it like a little file type to send it over to Google or send it over to Apple and be like, hey, here's what we changed stuff. And, you know, like they prioritize their work, right? So six hundred address changes in little old Morgan, Utah may not be at the top of the priority list, but they'll get around to it eventually, right? So, um, on paper, it's a simple process. Address changes, we notify the big mapping uh, companies, I guess, and they change their data set. The one that we have to make sure we're keeping up to date also on our end is the OpenStreetMap that Boyd and Emergency uses, because those are just crowdsourced. So anyone can go in and add an address on that.
I've had people, I give them my address, the real address, the one I've been using for twenty-six years. And, uh, they send it over to the gravel pit over here in Morgan. Under Google Maps and Apple Maps, it was correct. So, you know, there's something in screw in the system. I'm just worried about us if we change all these, all these addresses are, are all of a sudden, we're going to end up with more problems than we began with. So my suggestion, just, just a suggestion is from this point forward, we make sure the addresses are correct according to this guidelines. And from there, and then we can work on the back ones and try to figure out what we've got to do to make them right.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. I'm more just talking about the process for updating.
I know, I'm just suggesting.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
J, I just have one more question, both for you and. I just have one more question, both for you and Garrett and Boyd. So. My other question is, is let's say. That I have it in my house, my address in my house. And they give me a new address and I just decide I'm not, I'm not pulling that out of my brick and putting a new one in there. Does that not confuse you as well?
Yes. We're gonna see the address on the house and think it's the wrong address.
That's what I thought. Okay. Do you have anything else, Kate? Okay, all right. We're just gonna take a minute break here and. Come back to session here. Welcome, everyone. We're gonna get started. Appreciate. You being here today. This is our Morgan County Commission meeting. June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. We had our work session at four o'clock. And now we'll commence our, our regular commission meeting. I've asked Commissioner Blocker to give our pledge of allegiance and prayer, so we'll turn the time over to her.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful to gather here tonight as community members and. Leaders of the community to discuss the needs and wants of our. Yes, that we may work together. With our talents and resources to better beautify our community from generations to time. We are so grateful for the beautiful valley in which we live, for the abundance that we have in Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. So I know that there's a couple of concerns on the consent agenda items. Has, have those? Been resolved or is there something we need to pull from consent? And put into action, items or discussions?
I think we need still pull number three, number five, and number six.
Three, five.
And six. That's my choices.
Okay.
No. Okay. All right. Any can, any declarations of conflict tonight? Okay, I have, I have one with. Buster Del Monte. I do work for him, so that is one of my conflicts. So I will hold on that, those items of business. Okay, we have a presentation from our airport board tonight, so we'll turn the time over to. Oh, sorry. Yes. Apologize. I don't know why I'm, I don't see that every time. If there's anything on the, that's not on the agenda. That you would like to, or that's on the agenda, that's not a public hearing, if you'd like to come forward and, and share any of your concerns with the. Commission, now's your time to do so. If you could limit it to three minutes, that'd be appreciated.
Hi, my name is Melissa Porter. I live in the Highlands neighborhood in Mountain Green. And I came to the meeting tonight because of the agenda item that is discussing road safety. Specifically from Trappers Loop West, so SR one sixty-seven, I believe. We know that that section is maintained by UDOT. But we recently had a neighbor from our neighborhood pass away in a head-on collision. And it, sorry. It really shook up our neighborhood. And two weeks prior to that, one of our cute teenagers was also hit in an accident turning left out of our neighborhood. And I'm sure you're aware during ski season, this section of road is so dangerous. And sorry. Pull myself together. Anyway, I. Reached out to Councilwoman Blocker and let her know what had happened and. I kind of feel like we're at a point where enough is enough. UDOT is so slow to do anything, but. I believe that they have agreed to lower the speed limit from that section of Trappers to eighty-four going west. To forty miles per hour and also do double yellow lines the whole way. And I believe that those are positive changes, but the county is asked to provide. Two streetlights, or sorry, flashing signs that show like what your speed limit is. And I will say, as someone who drives on that road every day, I find myself going fifty-five sometimes. Don't tell. The law enforcement, but it's easy to do, you know, because it's just. It feels very open. And so I know that speed is a, a factor that is part of making that road more dangerous. And so I just hope that you will. Consider seriously that that is a good use of the county's funds. Anything that we can do to improve the safety on that road. I know that once the interchange comes in, things are gonna be so much better for our section. But our, the neighborhoods of Whisper Ridge, the road of Monteverde, Creekside, Highlands, and then. I don't know what road it is that comes out from those townhomes right next to Kent Smith Park. It is just dangerous for all of us. And in certain areas, visibility is very, very poor because we have telephone poles or bridges. Anyway, I just wanted to. Let you know that as a community, I'm kind of representing our neighborhood. There's many of us who are very frustrated with the safety of that section of road and hope that the commission will. Approve the funds to start these small changes and that maybe as we can keep moving forward, working with UDOT, we can. Make some more positive changes on that section of road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, now we'll turn the time over to the airport board.
Second trade, I'm sorry, trade. Hugh Horstman, background in flying, retired of sixteen, Potters Hill, stayed here. Worked for Southwest Airlines.
I'm Josh Bond. I live right next to the airport pilot. I have a hangar there and absolutely love the airport, so. Happy to be on the, on the board.
Jeremy, can you bring up the slides, please? Page. Four. Nope, just kidding. Page sixty. There you go.
Basically, it's our first update. We've already had three meetings, getting directions, decent direction for you all as well. So this is just a kind of an annual. Hope it to be an annual presentation.
Can you move the slide, Jeremy? Thank you. One back. There's usually someone else in here and he left, so I'm gonna have to hop on real quick. Uh, can you pause it, Jeremy? Thank you.
Okay, so the airport has forty-nine hangers and it's full. For all the residential and everything. Projects over a hundred and fifty airplanes, busy, it's full. Just installed new fueling capacity, which dramatically changed the airport feel. Because people from afar can come in and get fueled here and then leave, so they don't have to avoid Morgan Airport. So those are the topics tonight, just real brief, go over a few things. So those are the topics tonight, just real brief, go over a few things.
Jeremy. Thank you. Sorry, I'm trying to connect.
So I'll start. You guys can catch up with the slides. That's one.
He can't. He can't hear you in the mic. You're not picking up in the mic for some reason. I got it, Jeremy.
Go back to slide two. There it is. Okay, and.
That's on one? They're not numbered.
There we go. There we go. There we go. Having been in aviation my entire adult life, safety is number one for the entire dangerous business of flying airplanes. Our goal at the airport, number one, is to ensure that the safety stays high or gets higher. Another goal is the economic viability. It's, it's actually pretty good. We're going to get a few extra fuel fees, et cetera, but we understand that from the county's perspective, that it's, it has to pay for itself. So the last part is something we'll talk about a little bit more in detail, the beautification. We'll get to that at the end. So as far as safety, there's a windsock out there. When you drive by the airport, you see an orange sock looking thing sideways. And that's so that when you get ready to take off, you know which direction the wind is coming from. We need three. We have one and a half, one of them's a bit. So we funded, it's going to be installed here in a short bit. So we'll have safer flying operations for takeoff and landing because it's really nice to know before you take off and land where the, where the wind's coming from. Additionally, there is no weather, active weather at the Morgan Airport. So if you have a, a house in Heber, if you want to come up and fly, you come up here and you find out that the airport's closed because it's foggy. So you call a friend up here or do something else, but there's something else, don't fly here. So there is a whole international system of weather reporting, and the system to put it in stalled is not very expensive. It's about fifteen thousand dollars. So if you're flying from Denver and want to get to the West Coast, you could stop here if you knew what the weather was because we have fuel now, we can get gas, but you don't know what the weather is. So we're going to install one of those, and it should really help the safety long-term at the airport so people don't show up and then say, oh, I better go to Ogden, Ogden's full, whatever. That, the weather is active twenty-four seven. You can get it from anywhere in the world. If you're in Africa, you could type in the Morgan County Airport and find out what the car, what, a couple of cameras. You can look to see if it's good visibility, high ceilings, whatever else. But it should increase the transit through the airport also. Next slide. So this year, our budget was a hundred and five thousand. Next year, it's a hundred and twenty thousand. That's a wonderful win for the airport. We're going to get about three thousand a year in fuel sales, we think, for the, for the new fueling station. The windsocks, we've already got. The weather station, we're going to have to work with the county to reprogram some of the money we have. We just, it's not in the right budget category, and we're working with your staff to do that. We don't see any issues with that. Next slide. It is not the prettiest airport in the world. I've landed at over a hundred. There's hardly any that are pretty. Couple in Europe, in the middle of the forest, otherwise they're. So now that we're capacity for the hangers, we can focus on something different. And that is essentially, how do we make the airport a better neighbor, et cetera? So we've got a list of things, all of which are doable. There's some water issues we're working through. We've talked to the water board. We've talked to the folks here. That ultimately won't be an obstacle. We'd like to look at visual barriers, berms. There's noise cancelling stuff you can do, landscaping, et cetera. And we know that the berm is an issue for the people who live there. Safe economics, our budget next year is fine. We want to be a good neighbor. And as part of that, we were approached this week by twenty residents. They all have their names and addresses. They want to meet with us. They have some suggestions. We're going to sit down and talk to them, find out what they want, find out what's in our plans and make sure that they vary up as best as they can. And if we have to do a five-year budget or something, we will do that. But we have reached out to them and said, we'd love to meet with you. Most of them live at or near the airport, so there it's right in their heart. And like I said, it's not the prettiest. We've got a little berm out there that's dirt, or we'd like to look at, you know, put some vegetation up there with a little bit of water, so that's part of the issue. So we intend to look into all those things, and we'll let you all know how they're progressing. But the good news is there's four of us who are interested, and we have a very good airport manager, and we can help you get the job done.
Max, I, I'd just like to add that we've had several meetings with these guys and not seeing the previous airport board, but this group is extremely excited to make the airport better, be good neighbors. They're really excited about what's there, and they want to make it good. And so it's, it's been kind of nice to hear the plans and what they want to do and what they want to bring into the airport to include the, the community. So it's just been, it's been good to work with, with these folks, and I look forward to, to continuing that. So thank you for all you're doing.
Same. It's been amazing going to the meetings. I mean, this board, they're so talented, have great backgrounds, and they're doers, and they get things done. And they do want to be a good neighbor and have communication with all those around them. So thank you.
And I, I think the other thing, just to let everybody know, is we're going to have some events where we can educate the community as well. Why, why airplanes fly the way they do in and above the airport? That's not something we set. That's something the FAA sets. But, you know, why, why do we fly the directions we do? What do we, you know, there's, there's a lot of different airplanes. There's gliders. There's backcountry planes. There's, there's fast airplanes. There's a lot that goes on at that airport. I think it'd be good just to educate the community. So we're looking forward to having some events. We get the community out and educate them and let them know why we fly over their house and why, why we can't go a different direction.
Thank you. Thanks. Appreciate that. Thanks for coming and doing that. Look forward to future progression. I know it's been a long time coming, so, and I know that people will really appreciate it. That berm is a beautiful thing.
Yeah, so beautiful. We don't like it.
It will be.
Commissioner Blocker almost had Buster doing it with his own money, you know, she was right off after him.
He's going to put a big parking too.
Do the cemetery while you're at it. Okay, we're going to go backwards because I didn't take a motion on the other consent agenda items that can be approved. So I'll look for a motion for consent agenda items one, two, five, and seven.
Four and seven?
Four and seven.
One, two, four, and seven?
Yes.
I'll move to approve consent items one, two, four, and seven.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Now we will go into the action items, so we're going to start with F.
Consent item three.
Item three, the three from the consent agenda, right?
Correct.
Okay, Commissioner Fackrell?
Yeah, I just had some questions on it, and most of you that are using the same one. Have me circle, I, I'm circled. I'm just wondering about if we put in the total estimated budget of five thirty, is that going to decure somebody from? And I asked Matt this earlier, and he thought it was a good idea to put it in there. I'm just wondering if that's a good idea to put the dollar amount in there. I don't know. I'm just asking a question.
I'll do whatever.
I know.
What are your thoughts? What are your thoughts?
And so. I guess two thoughts. It's not uncommon for them to say, hey, this project is expected to cost X amount or has a budget of X amount. And I like that from a perspective of you don't have somebody come in and design something that's way over budget, right? Especially where it's a design-build project. I think they kind of have to know the budget to design it appropriately. The only downside is sometimes you have somebody who says, well, if the budget's five hundred thousand, we're going to spend five hundred thousand, right? So that being said, we developed that budget based on, on estimates, right? So it wasn't like we just came up with that number out of thin air.
And our grant award.
And our grant award, but the grant award looked at those estimates that we had, so.
So that wasn't just from an engineer saying.
No, that's our grant award.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
So the grant award was two fifty, and so what I'm, I'm questioning is, is a lot of our match can be done in kind. And so if there's something that, I mean, we're going to have them do a five hundred and thirty, or they're going to do five hundred, whatever it might be, where can we do the in-kind?
Maybe we ought to add that to the RFP. Is, it is anticipated that the county will do some work in kind. I mean, we could add that as just a line item.
Sorry, I did not write this. Lydia did. She just wants to correct you that our grant was two hundred thousand, not two fifty.
Was it two hundred?
So if we do, if we do do that, what, what possibly would we be doing in kind?
Like dirt work.
Excavation?
Excavation and dirt work, mostly.
Kerb and gutter.
Our Public Works or.
Dirt hauling and.
Okay, so not the electrical part of it, but the.
Well, I mean, we have someone that could do that.
But we'd like.
Millions doing the work for it.
You want it to burn down? Other duties as assigned.
So that's, that's my only thought is that way we could bring the cost down.
I think you could certainly note that is it's anticipated that the county will participate with in-kind work, which may include excavation, earthmoving, grading, et cetera.
Trench digging for the.
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
Electrical.
Fencing.
Do you have plumber too? You know how to do that?
Okay, will you add those few items just so?
So do you want me to?
Do you want to pull the?
I would say pull the total amount.
And then say the county, you know, is.
I like having the amount on there because in a design build, they need to understand what the total budget is. That, so they don't come back with a million-dollar park, and we go, well, we only budgeted five hundred thousand for it.
So do we want to reduce that amount and then put, the county intends to put in X in in-kind to include dirt work?
We don't know what.
I don't think you better do that.
I think you could put it right after that where it says the amount, then you could say, it is expected that the county will, will contribute in-kind services, you know, as part of this budget.
I think that's a good way to do it.
This budget includes.
Yeah.
Some in-kind work from the county, which may include excavation, site work, et cetera.
And that way they have, they understand they've got that guideline to work with, and they don't know how much in-kind. So I mean, I, I don't bid jobs based on what I see. I bid on it to get it, so.
Well, and, and because this is a competitive bidding process, right? So if you, if you push right to the top, you're probably not going to be the little bid, and you probably won't get the bid, so.
So, and, and hopefully they value engineer, you know, they, yeah, I can do this and I can do it better.
So I did have Lydia add into here fencing because we do currently still lease around this property. I'm sure that could save whoever bids this quite a lot if we take the fencing out, but I had her put it in there. What are your thoughts on fencing?
Is that something we, that we can do in-house as part of our in-kind?
I think we ought to look at the cost of it.
No, I think, I think the electric is going to save us a lot.
Just have them budget it. Just have them line item those things.
Okay.
And then, then the other items on that.
Your hotwire fence?
Yeah, that would be a nice.
Oh, I literally wrote line item electrical instead of fence.
And there's nothing in there for the trail around that part.
I'm sorry, say again.
Are we going to do anything as far as having space available for the trail?
So it's already started. The trail is.
Yeah, I know it's started, but I just need to make sure that through that field, we have that trail the rest of the way.
It's, it's through that field. Have you been over there?
I haven't.
They've, they've brought in dirt, and it goes clear to the end of our property right now.
So is the question on, when we put this out for RFP and we give them the site plan, do we want to designate out the section that's going to be designated for a future trail? Okay.
Brett and his crew have already, they've brought earth in, and it's probably, I don't know, eighteen inches high, all the way along there, as wide as a pickup truck, ten or fifteen feet wide, maybe ten or twelve feet wide.
Okay.
And it goes clear to the end of our, the property that we own.
So if that's the case.
Beautiful spot. Brett took me over there and we drove up it, and it's, there's shade, and it'll be awesome.
Cool. So do we need a fence? Because I'm wondering if that's something we ought to, maybe not.
Well, the fence would be across the river, right? I wouldn't put the fence on the side where the.
On the side where we're doing it.
Yeah.
Because if we did, we'd have to have gates because the future plan has trails that go across, I mean, a bridge that goes across the river.
Lydia says there is not budget for the trail right now, but I do have wording in the RFP for a river berm, which is the future site of the trail.
Okay.
It's a lot of dot-dot-dots, Lydia, to only text me one sentence.
I just want to make sure that we have included in space for that. And if we're going to do fencing, it needs, if, if we're going to, it'd be on the other side, and we don't know what it's going to be. So we don't need to have that in the bid.
Hold on the fence.
So take fence out for now?
Yeah. That was all the questions I had.
Mike, can you just explain maybe to the general public here where that trail is and what it is? And what you guys are doing.
Can we pull up a map?
Kind of exciting, and a lot of people might not know.
So if you've been to the fairgrounds in the last week and a half, you'll notice that the trail is now paved. So, and that trail connects back to the city trail that comes here past the high school. So now you can get on the trail, actually at Riverside Park, and go all the way up to the pickleball courts here. So if you look in that, I don't know how to best point this out. I'll stand.
So is it the Mickelson two mile now?
Yeah.
It's actually about three miles now.
So the existing trail now comes along here, right here, goes all the way along here, stops right about there, the paved portion of the trail. We are working on this portion of the trail, all the way up here, actually goes clear around this and back up to there. County owns all of this portion here. And right now, the Public Works has, has placed dirt all the way along here.
So head to it.
Which is another probably mile for this one.
That material come off the airport?
No. This is. We'll have to put. There, there is an access across that now, but probably. So it goes like this. And there's trees all the way along here. It's shady. It's really a beautiful spot.
Okay.
So we may not have paved all the way, at least initially, but.
There will be the ability to.
Mountain bikes can do it.
At least a dirt trail through there. We've got a, a Public Works employee that's really good with a loader, and he's been helping us out. And the contractor who did the Young Street project here where they're putting in curb and gutter had some extra loads of material that they needed a place to put, and so our Public Works department worked with them, and they piled that up just outside the pickleball courts there, and they're using that to. To do that, so. So it's been little to no cost. It's just time and fuel to move that material around, which is really awesome.
And I think your last red line was a capacity of ballots, not ballets.
That was a, that was on the next one. And we already approved that one. Oh, no, that one's, we haven't. So that one was a question that I had earlier today.
Do we need a motion on number three first?
Yeah, let's do that. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item B three.
May I confirm real quick?
Sorry.
That I'm adding the language that a portion of the budget is in-kind work by the county that may include dirt work and excavation. I'm removing the fence, and I'm including a site plan to designate where the future trail site is.
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Chair, I move to approve item B three as discussed this evening.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, B.
Five. All right, what did I miss spell?
Okay, I just wanted an explanation of it all.
Leslie?
And that's what Leslie could ask to answer to.
Jeremy, can you pull up the plan?
Uh, that is.
I think that's what.
I'm the one.
Oh, you're in charge?
I'm. Sorry, kids.
Okay, so my question is, is on this, is this plan, a tentative plan that you have here, or I guess it is a plan? What we're doing is the demolition is taking out your current counter.
Correct.
It's not taking out the counter in front of my desk.
Okay. All right, that was my question.
No, that will stay.
Okay, good. So.
Just a new countertop.
And just a new countertop that you're putting in there on the front, taking out the wall, putting in new glass.
There'll be pass-through windows that we will handle the pub, public through the pass, pass-through windows.
She will no longer be the social hub of the county.
Shucks.
I know. Should just get rid of that candy boy.
You can talk through the hole.
It's like being in jail. Just pick up the phone.
So if that's the case. I'm just curious, is why we're bringing it out? Is it state mandated for us to move it out versus just putting in new windows and doing all the stuff that we have to?
We've gotta put in those pass-through windows and we've gotta also have room for two employees to still sit there.
So we'd have to take out those desks.
Okay, the ones like where Katie sits and.
Where Katie and Penny sit. They will have different desks.
So that countertop will be their desk.
Okay. I was just wanting an explanation for all this. I just didn't know why we couldn't just continue with what we have, the flat one that's there.
It's, we, we had spotted a few years ago, a security audit and we failed.
Right. What I was saying is, is why couldn't it just stay where it is and just add all that stuff onto it? I'm just curious.
There's just not enough square footage in the office.
By the time you add those desks and then the countertop where Cindy and Leslie sit, you're not gonna have enough space to walk between, cause it's gonna just shove everybody backwards.
And I don't know if you see this right here, but this also adds our secure ballot box in the front of that, so smack dab in the middle. So instead of right now where you come in and you put your ballot, like in that box on Cindy's desk, it'll be built into the wall.
Oh, okay.
That would carry two hundred and forty-five, two thousand four hundred and forty-five ballets.
So that's ballets. So, so that was the other question I have is two thousand.
Where is that?
Capacity of two thousand.
The last line item.
Last item.
Ballots will not be stored in there. That is just where, when the public comes in, they will drop their ballots into that box. We will then take the ballots out, process the ballots.
Yeah, because I know we get more of that.
Yes.
So we'll have, it's a capacity in two thousand four, two thousand four hundred and forty-five ballets.
So, yeah. So for full disclosure, um, I've had my desk or my office, what, since March? We just realized today it says county administrative manger instead of manager. So we're doing great at spelling. Yeah. Uh, so.
Okay, can I get a motion then?
Let me make one comment. I talked with the state this afternoon. They have committed they would pay up to one-third of the cost.
Yay!
Um, they made negotiate here and there on a few things with us, but I was pretty happy with that.
Thank you for doing that.
Betcha. Play hardball. Okay, so six point O G. We're gonna take out ballet and add ballot.
Lot of motion.
Where were you on that?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item B five as updated this evening.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries?
Uh, is Janet stuck here?
Okay, B six. Resolution CR twenty-five dash thirty, updating the Fairgrounds rental agreement language.
Janelle, she's still here.
Okay. Um, and my question was to Matt earlier today was on this. Are we only approving or updating the rental agreement language? Or are we updating the whole Morgan County Fair Board's language?
I, this was not my project. Um.
My understanding was just the rental agreement. We had talked about changing the, the other portion of, it's actually kind of weird that it's that the Fairgrounds Board and the rental agreement are in one document. They probably should be two very separate documents.
Because.
Cause they're totally different purposes.
Okay.
I thought, I thought Blaine did have a some things as far as the exempt groups and things and people that would be on the board. I think it would be important that some people be on the board, like from um, transportation or something like that, too. I, I think that would be good to have somebody like that on there. We've got Lions Club, we've got rodeo, we've also got FFA, we've got the riding club.
Talking about the board.
Yeah, talking about.
We got lots of people from the same type of rodeo things.
So, so what I'd like to do is just have us discuss that at another time, the Fairgrounds Board.
This has been a work in progress for six months, so I was really excited to at least get it on.
I think we ought to separate this out. Like, I don't think the Fairgrounds Board should be listed in the rental agreement at all. I don't know why they're in the same document.
Right.
We ought to have a resolution that creates the board and.
So just take that right out then.
So that first page could probably just be completely removed from this.
Basically from, what is the page this is? Eleven of the.
Page forty-six of the packet.
Where it talks, Morgan County Fairgrounds rules. From there on.
No, from policy for rental of fairgrounds, arenas and facilities, right?
That's what I have up right now. That's page forty-six of the packet.
Yeah, that's, that's the portion that.
Forty-six on.
We do have a Fairground Board portion of our code as well, under thirty-three point zero three five.
To me, that's where that first page ought to be, is under that.
And if we're updating that, then we'll do that by ordinance.
Okay.
Would you like that updated?
We're separating. In the future, yeah. At a future point.
And you've got the exempt groups?
Yes.
Do we want to officially give them that task?
Let's separate it and so it's not confusing.
At current, we're going to, we're currently ignoring page, these two pages, sorry, in the packet, being, um, policy and rental and Fairgrounds Board, and we're just going, starting with page forty-six of the packet, which is what's on your screen.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And then there was a question on that rental agreement. If Brett Heiner is not here.
But he is.
Well, he might, he might be, but I mean, he's planning on retiring.
If he's saying if the director wasn't here. Public Works Director.
Did you not notice the cowboy hat in the mirror?
I'm, I'm looking at, okay, Brett Heiner may not be the director, the public works director at a later date. I think we ought to just cross that name out and just leave it as public works director.
Where is that?
Altering of fairgrounds.
Bottom of fifty-one.
That's the only thing.
We're not kicking you out, Brett.
No, Brett, you're, you're still here.
I can hear you in the back of the room, man.
I know you're planning on retiring someday.
It's on page eight of the agreement, too.
Okay, right here.
So that was my only question on that.
Looks awesome.
Strike. Strike Brett. Note to self.
But I think, as I've looked through it.
Oh, sorry, HR.
The balance right there. That's what I think we ought to do.
And what about the groups exempt from rental?
Okay, hold on, let me get back to that.
Um, because you've got groups, the rodeo club.
Where is that?
Just the one above it.
Forty-five.
I didn't think we were, I think.
It's page fifty.
Thank you.
In other words, we need to take that out of that disagreement.
This one?
Why do you need to take it out?
Well, because you've got in here, the rodeo club and the rodeo club had to come up with the insurance liabilities.
They all do.
Yeah, they all do.
Still have to have insurance. They just have to pay the.
They just don't pay the rental fee.
They're still in there. It still says they have to carry insurance.
They still have to pay the deposit as well. They just don't pay the rental.
And what about the chamber for the Fourth of July? And what about the, because that's not in this list.
So wait, the, the Fourth of July is a county operated thing. So the chamber is not part of that. And same thing with the car show, that's a county thing, just like the county fair is a county.
And so they had insurance liabilities.
All of those is under us, not their own.
They have their.
Clarification.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with that then.
Okay. Let's move this thing along. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve. Item B six, uh, resolution CR twenty-five dash thirty, updating the Fairgrounds rental agreement language with the changes discussed this evening.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Just to clarify, I'm, I'm striking Brett and page fifty-one, but I'm removing, removing the first two pages. Okay, awesome.
Okay, thanks, Jeremy. F one.
I said, did you finish before you got here?
I did. You're done. I'm kidding. I'm totally kidding. I forget. You take everything literal. My bad.
I don't know if you saw the email, Cassell raised the bill, but I'm, I actually think it's, uh, discount you guys got with working with them the previous year.
Right.
That they're just no longer giving us. So that's the difference in price for the nearly paid.
I remember doing that.
You guys do a lot of things and then I have to figure out what.
Well, it saved us that much money last year.
Do you want to pull it just from non-departmental? There's enough there. We could do that instead of pulling it out of the fund balance.
How do you do it, Mitch?
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the budget change form for information technology line item. Moving one thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars to GL ten dash forty-one dash, or forty-one, forty-nine dash three, ten dash zero, zero, zero. Uh, moving from the non-departmental.
You want non-departmental.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Katie, that's ten, forty-one, fifty, three, forty. Ten, four, one, five, oh, dash, three, four, oh.
Honorable Sean Rose.
So that's different than what's on the paper?
Yeah, he has.
This is the fund balance. I just said, let's pull it from, it's, it's a small amount and we've got four hundred and something thousand in non-departmental, so we'll be fine.
Okay, I am here to ask for a budget change. Um, th- this is for an increase.
This is like deja vu.
He's needy.
If you want to see it.
Okay, can, can I preempt this one?
Yes, go for it.
So Charles, that was up here earlier for the work session. So essentially what we found out when, um, we were testing the iSpy system, which is where we get our E nine one one numbers, was that the numbers in the system, especially for WPR, just didn't exist. And so we asked the guru, which is Charles, of what the heck's happening? And it took him fifteen seconds on a laptop to figure out that they were pulling from a crowdsourced site, which crowdsourced and in layman's terms that he had to explain to me was Joe Schmo taxpayer just uploads this data for you. So they're not pulling from Google Maps, there, which is what, um, Wasatch Civil does for us. They're not pulling from Apple Maps, which turns out no one was updating. So now, in that, we've just added and continued to add a lot of GIS responsibilities to Charles, um, since he's come on and he's been amazing. And in that, we've just in the last week added updating Apple Maps and updating the maps that iSpy pulls off of. So in that, he really, he has a degree in GIS, Geo, I don't know what GIS even means. That thing, Geospatial Information Systems. And when I thought we created this position with Brenda last year, I thought that's what we hired him for. But instead, this was back at the previous HR, he got hired for, that's just a deputy recorder. So in moving him to the spot that he's more than qualified for and putting him in that correct budget, which would up him, I think, for the whole year, five thousand dollars plus benefits. That's what we're asking for, is to put him in the correct position that best utilizes his skills that we're already utilizing and just not paying him for. So.
So five thousand dollars?
So, but this is partial year. This is a half year.
So what I'm asking for is just to get through the rest of this year and then next year it'll be the five thousand.
Can you just do that for the budget?
Mike, can you help us, help me with this? Last year we put into the budget already that fifty thousand dollars to take care of things like this. And we don't need to take it from the general fund to do that.
Correct. We could transfer it from that other fund.
Right.
Or are you talking about the pay increase line?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I would suggest doing, too.
So this may be a clarification question, because I do not allow for changes in title without a signature from the commission. How do you want to handle that in future? Same way?
I still think it should come here.
This isn't a change in salary. It's a change in his literal title and job description.
I think that should still come before this body. It's just, and we would still need to approve the movement of that money from that budget over to the recorder's office, but.
Just wrong line item.
Commissioner Fackrell's point is we've got the money there already set aside and already budgeted for this year. We might as well take it from that line.
So we don't have to go and increase or take money out of the fund balance to do that. It's already.
We already set aside fifty thousand for situations.
And then to add on top of what Kate mentioned, so just an update with the parcel fabric. It will become in mine in a couple of weeks. They're coming up and doing an onsite training next week. And then after that, it is, the hands are, it's getting handed off to, um, my staff. And so Charles will also be, I don't know if seeing that, but his knowledge will be solely taking care of that as well. So a lot more responsibility on something what Kate mentioned will be given to Charles for this.
So that means that's for both of those pages then, that we've got in there, budget adjustments, and that could just come from that one.
Yeah, for the, yes.
Okay.
Parcels, are you talking about the address changes or?
No. So the parcel fabric, that is pro west. And they've gone through and they've redrawn the whole county. Basically, our maps are gonna be digital. Everything's gonna be updated digitally. Um, it, it's been a, a process getting it done. Finally, we're to the step of them coming up and training my staff on how to do it, the program, changing the map, the whole system next week. And then it will be handed off to Charles, my staff, to, to do all the updating and all the mapping.
And Sean's been very gracious and opened up that training to not just his staff, but we also have, um, half the staff from planning and zoning coming and Janelle's staff as well. So we are cross-training on that. That's, that's all week next week. And reminder, that's also Judge Hyde's retirement party. Do you need a motion on this?
So.
Make a motion on it. She found the number for the account.
Okay, good. Thank you. Go ahead. Make them all night.
We'll keep them going here. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the budget change forms for the county recorder. Three changes. The first, the amount of two thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-five cents, moving from GL account number.
Ten, four, one, five, zero, five, two, zero.
That's the.
Non-departmental.
Do you need her to repeat that?
Wage and benefit adjustment.
Repeat that one.
Ten, four, one, five, zero, five, two, zero.
It's a non-departmental wage and benefit adjustment line item. Um, to the ten dash forty-one, forty-four, dash, one, one, zero, dash, zero, zero, zero. Also moving five hundred and seven dollars and two cents, which is the benefits line item.
Correct.
From that same line item number to ten dash forty-one, forty-four, dash, one, thirty, dash, zero, zero, zero.
You said a three. Did you want to do the other?
In addition, so the last one is actually, uh, two-part. It's setting up or increasing our revenue estimate for line item ten dash thirty-four, twelve, dash, zero, 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 dash, zero, zero, zero by fourteen hundred dollars and then adding a new line item. This is for the pass-through, pass-through of the Medici fees that we talked about at our last meeting. A new expense line item, also in the amount of fourteen hundred dollars under ten dash forty-one, forty-four, dash, three hundred, dash, zero, zero, zero.
I'll second that still.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean, Brett.
So while Brett's coming up, I want to preface this a little bit, um. Commissioner Nickerson and I had a good conversation with Brett about overtime and, and some of the challenges there that face Public Works. And, and one of the discussions that we had was specifically related to snow removal, which is, can be, depending on the year, can sometimes be high and sometimes be low. But one of the discussions we had is, well, you know, we look at overtime and think, well, if, if it's that much, why don't we just hire another person, right? And not pay overtime. One of the concerns and problems with that is we only have so many snowplows. So hiring another person doesn't do you a whole lot of good if you don't have a truck to put them into plows. And we only have so many people who are trained to do the job. So I just wanted to maybe preface it with that and Brett can expound on that a little bit more. But that's one reason why we do have overtime within that department and.
That's by far the biggest amount. And this is a three-year average. So I went back three years, not counting, because twenty-four wasn't done. So this was twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-one. And that's the average I got. Snow removal, and that's for all of us. That isn't for one guy. That's for, that's for five, seven of us if, if we end up having a part-time guy at overtime. So if you want to stay on overtime, that's, that's, if you was divided by five guys, that's the, that's the total amount on average. Our biggest winner, of course, was twenty-two and twenty-three. But our, we go for, we go in calendar year, so it does get split up a little bit, which does help from the snow removal. I remember doing the budget at UDOT in their fiscal year, and so you're entirely on the same budget for a big snow year. But this one actually, I think, helps me out a little bit when it comes to snow removal. So that is a three-year average.
We would also have to create the budget lines because IRS laws have changed. Currently, the only department that has a designated overtime line is the Sheriff's Office. So we just need to designate that overtime line also for, so we can separate it for IRS and context purposes.
So didn't we do this also in the budget last year? Was allowed for this?
We talked about it, but we never put it in, apparently. It didn't get included in the final budget.
Yeah, this, this amount I gave, I gave to Mike and Jared back then.
Yeah, because I remember.
October first.
Yeah, we had that discussion during the budget session.
Yeah.
We had the discussion on how much.
But when we finalized the budget, for some reason, we didn't include it. I think including it as a separate line item is a smart way to go because I, I assume what happened is when we did the budget, we looked at current, which we always do, we look at current employee wages and calculate out their wage for the year.
To the penny, yeah.
And we didn't add to that because we typically don't. But I think if we have a separate line item, that would be the way to go in the future. And it also allows to monitor a little better and determine what we are.
It's easier for me to track, for sure. I had to go back and go sell to get a three-year average on, on snow removal and everything. I'd go the time of year.
Do you think it would be, where you've got it broken down into snow removal, fair, and fairground and the miscellaneous to have a line item for snow removal so that you can really keep track of this is where I am and so that things aren't getting mixed and, you know, does that make sense?
Yeah.
You know?
Well, and they're, they're all separate budgets. He and I will have to get together on what he's.
So they would be separate line items.
Public Works is separate, building is separate, fairgrounds is separate. He's got like.
And that's why I was just saying, having fifty-five thousand dollars of overtime, but it's like, okay, we have so much in snow and but they're separate departments. Okay.
No, I always go back to UDOT. That's what I was, you know, I worked before I came here. And they have it separate for snow removal. And then the legislature, like, like this year, I, I know the UDOT guys, they did a lot of paving. In fact, they're paving right now because all their snow removal overtime goes to paving the end of the year. Chipping or paving, but mostly paving. So that's where they use their money on a year like, like, like this year. Two years ago, they was over budget, way over budget. So that's an idea too. That'd be a good way to track it, you know? And if I can track that, that helps me and I can, I can try to, try to, try to organize that better, like the fairs, affairs, really a pain. But we still do it and smile, right? Fairgrounds is getting busier all the time. So I have to have a guy in a tractor every Friday and Saturday, it seems like. But yet I need that guy on Monday. So it'd be great to hire somebody at the fairgrounds part-time that could do that. But I have, I've still got it open. I still have the job open and stuff like that. I've got kids that work for us. Of course, they can't run the tractor, you know?
I can't work overtime.
They can't work overtime. They can't work more than thirty hours a week. So.
And I think the, the point that Commissioner Newton made is far as we only have so many trucks and so many people that can drive the trucks. I mean, a couple of weeks ago, we had the water leak at the fairgrounds on a Saturday. There's only so many people that you can send over there to fix it. We can't just find the person that's lowest on hours. Only certain people can do those things and that may cut into overtime, but we need that person to go fix it. So I think that's good for people to understand.
And if you look at the fairgrounds, that's not a lot of money compared to one guy having to deal with, just like he was there Saturday. I was on the phone with him. That happens a lot. And then fairground or the fair is in its own category. It's crazy.
I, I mean, and I've said this to you and, and probably to a lot of the commissioners, in an ideal world, we would need two full-time people over there all the time because we'd have so many events going, we'd need them. And, and I hope we get to that point in the future where we've got something going so frequently that we need people over there helping out. To me, anytime we can bring people into the community and they spend money and they spend time, the car show was a huge success, the truck pulls were a huge success. We've got another rodeo this weekend. I mean, there, there's stuff happening. And every time we can bring people into the community and get them to spend money at our businesses and spend time here and then go home, even better.
Leave your money and go home.
That's right. So, okay. So do we have a? We.
So you just pulled.
We're talking about instructing to set up these line items.
Yes. And I'd need to know where you want to pull that money from.
Well, there's not fifty-three thousand in that, that budget. There was only fifty and we just took.
I mean, probably take the snow removal out of there.
Yeah, we could take one portion out of it and then take another portion out of the other.
Or two and, two and one?
Two. You snow out of one, what do you have there?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, how you want it?
What about if we were to put, take out of the fair and fairground? That's in parks, right?
No. Oh, yeah. That's your parks line.
And the miscellaneous is in building?
It really comes down to mostly parks in the summer. I get a lot of calls on the weekends. We get a lot of sprinkler problems and.
Bathrooms that need cleaned again.
We got pickleball problems and stuff happens all the time.
So both of those are actually more park line items than building needs.
I have a lot more. Because in the wintertime, it, it switches to snow removal. And we get calls out on drains and everything else too. But the miscellaneous is really more of a summertime deal. And, and I would love it if I didn't have to get up and do any overtime. Then I could stay in bed.
You can in a few more years.
But your crutches are gone?
We want that snow in the winter though.
And don't pray too hard or we'll have another winter like we had two years ago. Keep praying for water and that's what happens.
But whatever we don't use of this, if we budget this thirty-four thousand and don't use it, it just rolls back into the general fund.
If you would have, if, if you'd have put it in the budget for this year, I'd use just a small portion of it because we didn't have much overtime this winter.
So given that for this year, Brett, we probably don't need to move a full thirty-four thousand over, right?
Probably not. We, I mean, all we got is.
Because we're only going to have November and December.
Yeah, mostly December, yeah. Yeah, that, that would go down quite a bit. The fairgrounds and overtime is going to, you know, the, the other two are going to stay the same, I think.
Yeah.
I'd probably be lucky to, to use between all, all the guys, ten thousand overtime in, in twenty twenty-five.
So if we moved like for snow removal, maybe five thousand for this year, do you think that would cover you for December?
Can we just get to the point to where we use it and then go and add in what we need?
Nah.
No, I meant when it's getting close.
Yeah, but the problem is it's going to get close in December because we don't have snow until December. So I think we'd be better off to set the line item and put a little bit of funding in there, even if it's not.
So increase the budget on that item. Okay.
That'd be great.
But if that's the case, then we don't need to move thirty-four thousand. We move like five thousand for that and maybe for the other two, we can move those amounts.
Full amounts.
That's what I'd say.
If you, if you create the line items, then we can just put the amounts in as we need it.
For next year's budget.
For next year's budget too.
Which, yeah, that'd be good.
I can't believe we're going to be in budgets in another couple of months.
Leslie's super excited. So, so the idea on the, the table right now is five for snow removal, the full ask for fair and fairground, the full ask for miscellaneous overtime out of the same one that we just pulled for the Recorder's Office.
Yeah, which is the wage and salary adjustment line.
And then setting up the overtime line items. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And Brett, can you see me Thursday for today's setup of those lines?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you want a, a motion on that?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the setup and implementation of overtime line items for snow removal, fair and fairgrounds and miscellaneous various public works budgets. And that we move funding from the line item.
Ten four one five zero five two zero.
Which is the wage and salary adjustment line item in the amount of five thousand dollars to the snow removal overtime budget, eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-five to the fair and fairgrounds budget, overtime budget, and ninety-seven seventy-eight to the miscellaneous overtime budget.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, may I make a motion?
Sure.
Many of our planning commission applicants are in the audience and in respect of their time, I move we suspend the rules and consider moving line item eleven to item number six, line number six.
Just before five, you mean?
It's after five.
You were good, I guess.
Yeah, I'll second that.
You're good.
You're good.
Thanks, Brett.
Okay.
Mike seconded.
Was that, that, you made a motion?
Yeah, she made a motion to move that.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blocker and a second by Commissioner Newton. All in favor of doing that?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Sorry, Buster.
Oh, no, it's after.
It's after.
So Buster, you're up.
I'll be behind.
Leslie.
I appreciate you guys allowing me to talk again and, and enter into a discussion item. I don't know for clarification whether a, a decision is required from my perspective, but what generated my request to discuss was we're starting to work on the airport. And some of the bills are coming in for the earthwork. And to get it started, I'm sure most people may be aware, but for years now, there's been a lot of overburden that's been getting dumped in what's remaining of the airport. So to make the approved site viable, that we had to move nine thousand five hundred tons of material that we didn't put there. And so really, my objective tonight was, we got our first estimates from the earthworks company, Meakin Brothers, on some of the line items. And one of them was a fee. I suspect more fees are coming. In this case, it was a road cut fee for sewer lines. But, and I'm glad that Joe's here because he could probably give more history of how all that overburden accumulated over the years. And I don't have access to Wardell or Wasatch Civil's past contracts with the county to determine whether somebody was required to remove overburden from the previous runway work that was done or the construction of some of the sixty by sixty hangars. So for us, I'm hoping to just gauge, really from the commission, any sentiment, acknowledgement, maybe even empathy that we're, it's kind of a hot potato issue. And we just received the bill to move the ninety-five hundred tons of material that we didn't put there. And it was sixty-five thousand dollars. So I'm not sure if it's in the question of fairness and good faith, if that's seemingly right. But I'm, I'm just trying to gauge where the commission's at and then more than willing to work for budget-neutral ways of maybe sharing, working towards some of that by offsetting maybe fees that you didn't budget that were going to come in and et cetera as we proceed. So again, maybe not a decision per se because more fees will be coming, I suspect. But as we're doing the work and the numbers start coming in, I'm like, this doesn't feel right in good faith that we're cleaning up a bunch of other things that happen with overburden there.
Buster, can I ask you a question? I, I was under the impression that after they, they were started, that they had availabilities of trucks that they had for other jobs and it was going to reduce the cost from what they originally estimated. Did that, apparently that didn't happen, huh?
Nope. They, they did lower the cost. The original estimate to truck it off was well over a hundred thousand dollars. But because they had those, I don't know what they're called, they're massive earth movers and they can't drive on the roads. But they already had them for that week rented. They were able to cut us a break and get it well under six figures.
And Brett, I, I think you were given the assignment to look at previous contract, right? To see if that was, and did you, were you able to do that?
How much they had to dig out, which is about two feet. And I can't remember the square footage, but it add up to a lot of, a lot of material. And I met Buster down there. And I'll give you my take on it. It was in Buster's way. He had to move it. So he moved it farther up to a nice pile, actually. It looks good. But I went and measured it and I come up with three hundred and eleven fifteen-ton loads, ten-meter loads, three hundred and eleven. Yeah. So if I, if I was to move it with three trucks, it'd take me three hundred and eleven times to, to move it. And right now, the fairgrounds, I did get some dirt like Mike indicated earlier. So if we was to move it, I think it'd be in the future, it wouldn't be right now. You know what I mean?
So we didn't use any of that for the berm then?
For?
In the berm at the fairgrounds?
For the trail?
Not yet.
Not yet, no. Just because they got free dirt that, that they brought us.
So the dirt we did use was free?
Yeah. It was from this job right here, from the city job.
So if we were to use that, use some of that for up here in our project, even the, the field itself, if it's needed there, can we do that?
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I went down to measure it to see how long it would take to, to move it. I think I'd, I think I'd have to get some help. I'm thinking I have to double my trucks and move it. You know what I mean? But we've got plenty of contractors around here. I could, I could rent them. And with the county trucks, with six trucks, I could probably do it in a week, maybe four or five days. So to give you an idea what's there. And the only thing that, and Buster's not going to really like this, but after I look at it, that material was there and he knew it was there. So I'm sticking up for the county. You know what I mean? He knew, he knew it was there before he started the project. I'm not saying that it's not the county's material. He just knew it was in his way. And the county had no way to move it the way he moved it, you know what I mean, to do it. So. But in the future, if we need it over there, I think we've got, you know, three hundred and eleven loads, we can move up there in the future. So. So I imagine that'll happen one day because that's, that, that ground's really low. We're going to have to build it up quite a bit so it doesn't sub.
We've also got the other side too that currently where the sheep are. But that's going to need to be built up too if we do any kind of our projects on it.
Yeah, whatever we do, there's going to be built up. So.
Up there at the airport, is there, I'm just looking at the map here and the runway runs quite a ways up past all the hangars. Is there anywhere up there we can take it and grade a bunch of it out and just?
That's what, that's what they did. I mean, they didn't grade it, but they, they just piled it up there.
You just piled it up further up. But I mean, is there a way that we can?
They did a nice.
This material can stay there. He, Buster did a great job. Brad Meekum's doing an awesome job. That's why it was easier to measure because it was such a nice berm. It's up there now. We could leave it if we didn't need it. Does that make sense? If we need it, we can, we can go get it. If we don't need it, it can stay there. So.
There's no sense in us paying for dirt if we need dirt since we have it. But if we don't need it.
The way, the way Buster did it, it is a nice job, the way they moved it and piled it up there.
He says it's a nice pile. I just envisioned a nice big pile of dirt.
It's about five feet high.
Okay.
It's about five feet.
So Buster, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So Juan, I had the same concern as Brett Heiner, but when you entered the contract, into a contract with the county, you never mentioned. but when you entered the contract, into a contract with the county, you never mentioned the dirt issue.
That's correct. I get back to my, I'm an aviator, not a developer, so this could have been a really big lesson learned. But it's the good faith thing, and, you know, talking to people who are helping guide me this, I was under the impression that a lot of that was going to get taken by the county from discussions that were had for other uses, and so don't worry about it. And again, aviator, not developer, this could be a very expensive lesson. I'm just here to gauge, you know, the good faith to say, oh, here's a fee we didn't know about that you're going to have to pay to cut the road, and we didn't budget that money anyhow, we'll waive it. But, you know, to be determined, I haven't gotten all the bills in yet. I'm just trying to gauge it through discussion, you know, and educate, I'm being educated on this, too. And, you know, if there's a willingness where we find a potential win-win and, and keep the good faith and the goodwill going, I'd be very thankful.
And number two, have you approached the airport board about this issue?
About this issue, guys, but actually, no, really, and I apologize for that, but they just stood up. I've been swamped with some other big alligators on the federal side. And so I have not had an opportunity, but I, I would love to.
I think that's a good idea.
Yep, absolutely.
I will say this, since I've been involved in it. Buster's moved it once at his expense, because it was all pushed to where he built his place now. He's moved it once. And so it has been talked about, this isn't the first time it's been talked about. Buster did know that the pile was there, but we did tell him that we would be using it for whatever, as I remember in our meetings, so. So just, this isn't the first, this isn't just like a new thing that's come up. We've talked about this, overburden a lot.
We have talked about it for over a year.
And I'm, I'm not asking for $65,000. I'm just asking if there's a way to help me.
Yeah.
I understand.
And I think our way of helping is to use it on our projects up here because we know we're going to have to have some fill.
But it's. It's already been moved, though.
Off of my, off thirty.
Cost, he's, what he's asking for is that maybe we can waive some fees to deal with this.
So I just wanted to get that request on the record. I'm not asking for a decision. There's going to be more numbers coming in and, you know, would hope to readdress the commission. But just awareness and just, you know, trying to continue to work in good faith, so.
Is it $65,000 to move it that short, like, just that distance, then?
Took pictures, I hadn't seen trucks like that since I had Tonka toys. And it was, it was impressive, but it is now off of the project area. So I'm, as far as I know, I'm good to continue doing what we're doing. It's just been relocated again further to the north. And we had them smooth it all out, so it's kind of a nice plateau in a previously somewhat depressed area of the property.
How many of those Tonka trucks did they have?
They had two of those massive Tonka trucks and two.
How many excavators?
I believe there's two excavators and one massive dozer.
And I think they were full-time, twelve hours a day for how long?
Days, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was a big project.
They moved a lot of dirt. So thanks for your time, appreciate the consideration.
Thank you.
End up back on the agenda some.
Thank you.
Bert Sheffer. Is that right, Sheffer?
Sheffer, that's correct.
Okay.
Hi, thank you, Commission, for hearing me today. I am the president of the Whisper Ridge HOA, and we just had the declaring pass control to us. And we found out that, you know, a couple of days later, we got a bunch of bills that were unpaid, and our reserves are basically nothing. So we're in a hundred thousand dollar hole. I forgot to fill out my budget change form. Line item I need to reference, but. But basically what I'm requesting is in our CCNRs, there's a section fourteen point one that stipulates that we have a professional management company run the HOA. And that has cost us about $6,500 a year for the past eleven, twelve years, and we've gotten basically nothing out of it. And with the disinterest of the declarance, things have fallen into decay, things have gone to the wayside, and we've just been paying the $6,500 a year. Nobody in our development is happy with our management company. We would love nothing more than to fire them. But with this requirement, it states that the county needs to approve. Can't, we can't amend this section without your approval. So we did meet, and we had a special HOA meeting. We put forth several amendments. One of them was to strike this entire section, and it overwhelmingly passed, well above the sixty-seven percent required by our CCNRs. And at this point, we just need county permission so that we can move forward with that and record it.
So I have a, a letter that I think, well, I'll, I'll give this to you today, but just to put on the record, this, this is a really interesting provision that shouldn't have made it into the CCNRs because the county's not a party to that agreement, and nor do we enforce that, which we've let many people know throughout the county, at least since I've been here. And, and so that's, my recommendation is that we don't approve it or deny it because we're not a party, but I have a letter here that clarifies that so that you can take that to your board and say, all right, we're, we can amend it as the parties to this agreement or whatever your legal counsel directs. However, thanks to my awesome deputy attorney, she dug into the development agreement. And unfortunately, it does show up here in section three point one, point seventeen point one, talking about the maintenance of the open space and trails. And at the bottom, it does say, "The homeowners association shall be required to hire a professional property management company to manage and maintain all aspects of the common area and trails." And the development agreement is something that the county does enforce and that we are a party to. However, it doesn't indicate which professional property management company it is. And so from the county's perspective, you wouldn't, you don't need approval from the county of who you hire. It's just something that's in the development agreement that is required to have something. So you could hire another one if you wanted to fire the current. But if you were wanting to get rid of the requirement to have a professional property management company, then we would just need to update the development agreement.
Okay.
And, and so what I thought would be helpful tonight, too, is to gauge the commission's, like, what are their thoughts on amending the development agreement? Just so you don't go through the application and they're like, no, we, we don't want to do that. And so maybe there's a discussion of pros and cons of having a professional management company. How does that impact the residents? What might some of those pros and cons be?
So to add on to that, our intention is not to keep away from a management company because it is definitely a beneficial use when the company is working in your favor. It's just we're in such a deep hole of about $100,000, and we don't want to pay for those fees on top of raising the dues and everything else to get those bills paid and fund our reserves. So this would be like a short-term solution, excuse me, so that we could take forty-five-hundred-ish, because we have identified software that would be far less expensive to manage our small, we got sixty-two homes in, in this HOA. So it's roughly like twenty percent of our dues every month goes to this management company that has let everything fall apart, so.
And so you're just saying, in the short term, you would not have a management company at all, but then eventually bring a management company again?
So once we get the bills paid and we get the reserve back, I don't want to take phone calls just in the, in, in the interim of trying to pay these bills and refund the reserve. That $4,500 goes a long way to do that each year. So rather than taking eight or nine years to do it, we could do it in like four or five or even less, so.
So what's your recommendation?
So my recommendation would be.
How can we help him without?
I, I think that if we, if we just take that provision out of the development agreement, then there's nothing that's prohibiting you from the county's perspective. Your CCNRs can be amended without the county involvement.
Yeah.
Already. And so I know the request was for the CCNRs, but we found the, the enforceable one in the. And so what I'll do is I'll, I'll give you this letter that you can just have for your records, and then perhaps we can, maybe you can give me a call tomorrow, and let's just get that application going for the development agreement. So is it my understanding that the commission would be in favor of that development agreement, and it's worth doing the application?
Can you read that section one more time? It sounded to me like the intent was to have a, a professional manage the common areas.
And they have.
More than just manage the HOA, right? That's what I heard when you read it, and maybe I only heard part of it.
Yes, that, that is correct. The homeowners association shall be required to hire a professional property management company to manage and maintain all aspects of the common area and trails. So it is limited to just the common area and trails as far as the development agreement.
So if that's redacted, who would then be in charge of maintaining it? And would they be able to dispose of that asset?
Well, it would be the homeowners association. But they're not able to dispose of the asset, they'll just take over the management. The only way they can dispose of the asset is if they amended their development agreement to limit their open space requirements, which I would recommend against because that was the basis for the density, which has led to some of our fire problems up there a, as far as international fire code. So that's a different situation than what this is. This is only limited to maintaining common area and trails.
Which I will note again, the management company has not maintained those things, they're falling apart, so.
And you can't hire a different one?
We could, but with the hole that we're in, at $100,000, it'd be really nice to take forty-five-hundred, five thousand and plug that away at that debt so we can get out of the hole that we're in. Because they kind of just got dropped on our heads.
In the meantime, what's the plan as far as bringing that back to, like, is there a plan to?
We've already, in our HOA special meeting, we met at the common space. We cleared garbage and debris, we spread fresh mulch, we've refreshed the, the irrigation system. There were, we actually, part of the bills that we got was the declarant had a leak on that property. It was a million gallons of water that basically ran into the creek adjacent to that property, cost us $30,000. So that's the type, type of care that we're getting from this management company. And we're, and basically they handed it off and stuck us with the bill, so.
Thank you.
Where is Whisper Ridge?
Whisper Ridge is the first, first.
As you get off.
Pave Street to the left, as you get off the exit by Robinson's there.
It's the last one on the west end.
Okay.
Last division on this west end of the valley.
There's another one back there, but it's on a dirt road, so.
Oh, that's true.
Okay, so it sounds like he's got a letter from Garrett, and then you're going to get with Garrett to submit the request for the modification to the development agreement.
So basically, we can amend the CCNRs with this letter.
Well, the county, I'm just saying that we're not approving or denying because we're not a party and, and we don't enforce.
Okay, but I basically file, I'd record the amendment with this document, so it's.
You, not with that document. I mean, I guess you could, but that document doesn't say anything about your CCNRs as far as whether the county approves or denies them. Because the only time that we review them is when subdivision first goes in. And then after that, we're not a party and can't enforce them even, you know, at, at any rate.
All right, okay. Thank you. Okay, we're going to jump down to number eleven.
So there was an error in the packet that Leslie pointed out to me. We are, we are not recommending her appointment to the planning commission.
How can she do that?
She was excited to see.
Unless she resign her elected office, so it just kept auto-populating, it was God's plan. Had nothing to do with me.
I thought the application was not there.
So I have corrected that in the packet. Sorry for the heart attack, Leslie. Just want to make sure you read it. Commissioner Blocker, how would you like to proceed?
How would I like to proceed?
Yep.
How do you?
Would you like to enter? So we'd just like to have them each come forward and introduce themselves, and we can ask them questions, and.
So.
We'd just like to get to know them a little bit.
I know we have Debbie here, Travis here, and Jimmy. And Jessica sent me an email that she is withdrawn.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was her last?
Three of us, three of you.
Are you giving up, too? Go on to that.
Debbie, since you're this seasoned, do you want to? Since you've been on our planning commissions forever and ever, since you've done this interview seventeen times. Hi.
Hi, Debbie Sessions from Peterson. Questions? Just myself?
Absolutely.
Yeah, introduce yourself.
Since you rarely get up and speak.
I, I really haven't.
I know you, I wasn't being facetious.
I don't know, I don't think I really need to introduce myself. I've had experience on the planning commission for a couple of terms. The best way probably to introduce myself, I think I can benefit, okay, I'll even back up more. We've kind of had a perfect storm that has happened with the planning commission. Normally, we have just a couple of new members every year, and there's just a gradual changeover. But because of the change in the ordinance and a resignation, we just have a, a lot of new members. And I feel I'd like the opportunity to get back on the planning commission. I think I offer, I was trying to think of a word as I'm standing here talking. All I can think of is institutional knowledge, but that sounds kind of high-flutin'. It's not my first rodeo. I think I can offer the background, the historical background that's sometimes necessary. I read a quote once that if, before you remove a fence, I'll go to agriculture, it's important that you know the reasoning why it was put there in the first place. And I think I can offer that perspective on the planning commission. I think it's good that the planning commission has varied interests and backgrounds. I think I bring the ag perspective. It's important, I think the ag, everyone likes to be colic, open space. They don't like all of agriculture, but they, when they think of agriculture, they think to be colic, open spaces. And I always find it interesting, I see on social media, you see posts that we love our farmers quickly changed to those greedy landowners. Depending, as long as they keep farming, we love the farmers, but when there's the changeover, then they become greedy landowners. So I think it's important that you have the perspective of an ag person on the planning commission. I think my record shows, I, I do my homework, I, I do research, I come prepared to the meetings. I dependably attend my meetings. Some people say I don't have a life, as you can, we dependably, I think I have better attendance at your meeting than some of you guys. Prior, priority-wise, I think the planning commission is called a planning commission for a reason. And I think we've gotten off track. All of a sudden, we just kind of become more administrators. We approve applications, we don't do much planning, only when we're kind of forced to. And I, I'd like to see the planning commission do more planning. I appreciate you budgeting for the general plan, I think that's important. It seems like lately, our general plan is so outdated that it's dying, it's kind of like suffering a death by a thousand cuts. I mean, every application that comes forward for a reason, we have to amend the general plan. I mean, that tells me it's not working, so. there's problems there. So to me, that's a priority. And then later we need a code change. And I think the attorneys, especially Janet, has, she's tried her best to put lipstick on that pig every time we make a change. She tries to go through and make sure there's no conflicts and that. It's just very difficult to work with, but that needs to be done. I think that's about it. I, there are some code changes that I think would be good and one of them is on the planning commission. I think it's good that we're all five of you are here. I think you have much better discussion and decisions. And I think it's good for the planning commission to be there, all seven people. So maybe there could be a code change, maybe have some alternate members that, so you can always have a full commission. Cause I think it makes us for a better discussion and better decisions. As far as growth, I know everyone's concerned about growth, especially in Mountain Green, and I understand that. But as I, I look over at Mountain Green, most of it's already been rezoned. I mean, it, the dye's been cast. And it seems like the developers that are coming have an affinity for townhomes. And unfortunately, the zone allows the townhomes. We've had discussions in the past, I know, among planning commission members that maybe we need to tighten the ordinance to maybe have a landscaping requirement where there's a certain percentage of open space when you do townhomes. And instead of trying to cram as many townhomes you can on a parcel, maybe once you reach, you know, so many townhomes that you require this amenity. I mean, why have seventy townhomes on seven acres and not even a tot lot? You know, makes, doesn't make sense. So I think we can do a better job at making the development that is coming and making it look better. Makes sense. Any questions?
So Debbie, you were on the planning commission when all the townhomes were approved?
All?
In Mountain Green, I guess I'm assuming all those new townhomes, were you?
The ones that are being built now?
You were non-voting chair, correct?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was chair and I didn't vote unless there was only four members.
Okay, okay.
So, but that, those townhomes became because of the zone. And that's not the planning commission's decision.
So I guess my question to you is, what did you, what did you do personally to push for the tot lot or anything like that?
Well, it's not in our code, so you can't require it.
Right.
Fortunately, we had, we have requested as a planning commission for different changes, code updates, but our, the planning office is so swamped, as you know, he's bringing forward code changes as he can, but we've asked for architectural, better architectural designs in the commercial area. And one was the landscaping and, you know, open space and we had a ridge line that we requested ordinance and they're out there. I get, well, he'll get to them, but but we did request those changes so that we could require amenities in townhomes and require more open space. Cause right now our code doesn't allow it as to make that request.
So for me personally, when we get a recommendation from the planning commission, I take that seriously. Like you guys really looked at that and considered what was going on. So want to know, I appreciate all the time and effort that you have put into it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I know you guys have it in your bylaws that you don't vote as a chair. I personally don't like that because it's important, it's important for me to know how Debbie Sessions looks at something too, not just. I mean, it makes it easier on the, the chair.
Sometimes, yes, yes.
Unless you're, unless you're breaking a tie.
Make, making or breaking a tie.
Correct.
And required to vote when there's only four.
But that, that only feels like it's, I'm, I'm understanding what, how Debbie feels very few times. So.
Right, right.
Anyway, that's.
Yeah, the chair, I think on the planning commission more runs the meeting, keeps order in the meeting. That's kind of what the bylaws say. The bylaws need to be changed because they're outdated since the ordinance was changed.
So how do we change that? How do we change that law? I mean, that code? To where the chair does.
Who changes the bylaws?
I think the planning commission would make the recommendation. I, I think Garrett, I gave him a copy of it. He asked to see it right after the code change. But we, yeah, it needs, again, that's another.
I mean, we could, we could request that they look at that. The planning commission would need to make a recommendation and then we would approve the changes.
And you approve their bylaws.
I'd like to see it changed too.
Any other questions for Debbie?
No, I was gonna ask about the issues that she saw facing the county, but she
pretty well said.
She pretty well said those, so I think that's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Who wants to go next?
Travis?
Travis Taylor. Hey, happy to be here. Happy to answer any questions. I've, I've done this. Worked with planning commissions and city councils, county commission for about thirty years now as a developer and a developer's representative, as a city engineer, as a consulting engineer, running projects through the cities and counties. And I've spent a good chunk of my life reading code, digesting it, understanding it, going to these meetings, making presentations. Really been on both, both sides as far as the city goes and as far as the applicant goes. I think it would be my, my thought, and I've seen, I guess I've seen a lot of approaches in planning commissions and in city councils and county commissions. Some are good, some are bad. This is a little weird that you have a, a planning commission chair that's non-voting. I don't think I've seen that very often. I can't recall ever seeing that, but it's weird. So I think my perspective would be to apply the code that you guys have decided on, to see holes in the code as they, as issues come up, as development comes up, to analyze that, make recommendations. And for me, I guess I would just see that I've just seen it in enough places. I've digested enough code that things stand out to me and, and I I don't know. I'm happy to answer whatever questions you guys have.
I have, I have a question for you. Have you, have you watched any of the planning commission meetings?
I have not.
Okay. I just, I just wondered if you had done that and if you, if you, have you saw anything that you, that you felt like you would do differently or change or?
I'm sure. Things would start jumping out. No, honestly, I, I go to these a lot from Casa Grande, Arizona is the furthest away project that I have right now. I've been through rezones there. Got a project in downtown Mesa that I went through a rezone recently on. Flagstaff, we're building five hundred and seventy apartment units there that I took through, all the way up to Rexburg is probably the furthest north in my current job. Other than that, I took through things, through projects through in Wyoming and Idaho.
So is being here every other week a problem?
You know, it, I'm trying to phase out a little bit in my current role. Kind of getting towards the twilight of my career there. So I do have a helper that can, that can fill in. If it becomes a problem, but there are, there will be some times where I'm sure there's a conflict and I will be at the waiting because I have to be. But for the most part, I think it'll be fine.
In your application, you said that you, you want to be a reasonable voice on the commission, applying the code fairly with an eye towards what is best for the community while respecting private property rights. What is your eye towards the community?
It's a good question. And I guess it's not the community, it's the whole county.
It's the whole county, because you're at large.
Yeah.
It's not just Mountain Green.
And Mountain Green.
Yeah.
You know, I guess I'm a little sensitive to encroachment, just in general. But, but I, and I, so I respect the private property rights, but I understand begrudgingly sometimes that that there needs to be good planning and, and good strategy in the county to make things make sense. You know, people have made investments in their houses and their lifestyle that I, that I think should be protected. I've kind of come around to that over the years a little bit begrudgingly, that I don't want certain things built next to my house and other people don't either. But some things are unreasonable to expect that nothing will be built next to your house. You know, if you don't, if there's a farm next to you and it's zoned something and you live next to that farm and you bought there because you, because it was an open space and you thought it would always be open space, well, then you should have bought the farm or petitioned to have it rezoned, you know, gone through the process, but with an eye towards the community, I, I guess, I guess I would kind of fall back to Harriman. So I was Harriman City's first engineer, first city engineer. And it was when things were really taking off and we were establishing, we were really establishing the look and feel of that community. And I was kind of integral in that because, you know, we didn't have a very big staff and there was so much happening there. So the big park spaces that you see there, the transportation corridors, all of those we were kind of making up as, as we went along in those early days. So I think I would also honestly fall back to that kind of thinking, you know? And it may not be happening here as fast. It is kind of happening in Mountain Green at a pretty fast pace. It may not be happening in the rest of the county. But I think you kind of have to begin that process with a vision, with a vision in mind, you know? And I don't think it always has to be the stick. I think we can use a little bit of carrot in the code. And I see, I see a lot of stick in the code and maybe not in Morgan County, but in a lot of codes that I deal with, there's a lot of stick and not enough carrot. And I think with enough time that we can draw the uses that we want in, in certain areas just by incentivizing them. I think it was, it was Warren Buffett's partner's name. He just said, one that died, Charlie Munger. He said, show me the incentives and in the end I'll show you what you were gonna get. And I think that's, I think that's where the county goes. And you guys are the lawmakers. It wouldn't be the planning commission. I guess they're land use authority for something, I don't know what. But it would be, it would be our role to advise the county commission in, in that vision and help carry that out.
Thank you.
So I first met Travis at a meeting and he opened his mouth. And I started learning how his background and education he has and people are avoiding me because there's so many talented people in our community that I always encourage them to run for this, run for that, run for this, get involved, get involved, get involved. So I'm glad you're not avoiding me, but I did encourage him to apply. I think he would be with his knowledge and skills, a great asset to the community and with right now, the majority of the development in Mountain Green. It's nice to have someone super close to that area that sees it daily, what is going on as well. My question for you is how are you going to work with developers and community members when their opinion completely differs?
I guess there's different layers to that. Number one, the code is the code. So if there's something that's in the code that you guys have adopted, then, then that's the answer. If not, at the planning commission, I mean, where, where it's a public hearing and people are voicing their input, I guess I, I can't give you a blanket answer other than there, everybody's opinion will be considered. And I've just found it the most reasonable approach for me, when I go into a, what seems like adversarial situation with the city council or planning commission, that I don't think it should have to be that way, but I really try to, I try to understand their point of view. I really try to put myself in their position, understand it, and then I think I can come to a reasonable compromise on how to move forward. I've just had to do that so many times, so many times. And it's, it's always, it's tense, it's emotional. And I think that's the only way to do it, to try to diffuse it is to let them know that you understand their point of view. You can reiterate it to them. However, that works in the, in the situation, whether that's a discussion with them or a discussion amongst the commissioners so that they can hear that their, their voices are being heard. They might not always get their way, but at least if they know that their opinion and their feelings are considered, I think that's as good as it can get. You know, I just don't think you always get your way, but if you're heard and you feel like that you, your, your concerns were a part of the debate, then I think that's as good as it gets.
Thank you.
Are you, how familiar are you with like the different area plans and?
I'm not.
Cause you know, we have multiple areas within the county and as an at-large, you know, you're kind of, I think it'd be helpful to be, understand each individual area and kind of what the desires of those areas are. You know, living in Mountain Green, you've got people in Croydon, you know, how do you, as you read, as you would learn these area plans, how would you feel like, if there are things that you don't agree with, but those residents, this is what we want in our areas, how would you deal with? Like, I guess you may disagree with their feeling, but it's like I look at Mountain Green, I'm just like, man, I'm kind of glad I don't live over there. I love, I mean, and that made me be rude to say, but when I first moved back up to Morgan, I lived in Mountain Green and I had people, oh, where are you gonna build? Where are you gonna, I says, I'm not building a subdivision. I want nothing to do with a subdivision. I moved out of a subdivision for something else. And so as we are dealing with multiple views on the county, what's, what's your reaction to that? Cause it's not like a Harriman City. I used to live in Riverton City. And, you know, it was pretty well established. Harriman, I watched Harriman from when there was nothing out there. I actually got there and fly my Falcons and Hawks out there and now good luck finding anywhere to even walk your dog. Good luck. And so as you see that happen to Morgan County, what's your reaction to these other areas and area plans that may differ from what you may see as beneficial to them?
You know, okay, I've got a project that I'm trying to work through in Mesa right now, kind of Northwest Mesa. And they have these, and also Logan. Logan has these neighborhood plans that I've had to navigate through. And in Mesa, there's a, there's a city council, they have districts for their city council. And so I've coordinated, I don't agree with their plan. It's this desert uplands preserve thing and I don't, I want to do, believe it or not, I want to do some townhomes there. They don't allow it. So I'm having to navigate that. But I've watched in all of those meetings, in Logan City, where I've had to meet with representatives over certain areas, whether that's the Bridgerland area out in the west part of Logan, whatever. I've, I've watched the deference that the other city council members give to that representative. And especially when they talk about the input from the neighborhoods, you know, oh, losing where the other one, oh, Provo, Provo, they'll have neighborhood meetings. And I've, I've had to present at the neighborhood meetings in Casa Grande too, it, present at the neighborhood meetings where you get neighborhood, neighborhood consensus. And I know that the planning commissions and the city councils, county commissions, they always weigh that very heavily. So I think, you know, it, those are the people that are closest to the issue. I think sometimes they can't see the forest for the trees. But I think to defer to them is, is where, unless there's a reason, really reason not to, and where you could explain that and have the conversation with them and help them see a different point of view. But other than that, I think the more local the input, the better the input. I, I think if it was, if that was detrimental to the whole county, you know, somebody was some weird hold. if that was detrimental to the whole county, you know, somebody was some weird holdout that was stopping the county from, you know, doing what the county wants to do or needs to do, you know, I think that has to be balanced. But in general, I think, I think deference would have to be given to the local.
You have anything else?
No, I think you've answered the questions that I would have asked. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
So just some of the questions from some of the commissioners seem to indicate, because this is an at-large position, whoever's appointed would be representing the entire community. That's true of all Planning Commissioners, even though they're associated with certain areas. It's just to give voice or to give access to the Planning Commission, but they're not elected, they're not accountable to the people, they're accountable to the commission, they're appointed by the commission, and as not an elected official, they're actually supposed to be the experts in our code. So that they, when they provide recommendations to the County Commission that deals with things outside of our code, it's hopefully more well thought out, more well researched, and a more, um, I guess, deep understanding to provide that recommendation. And so I just want to stray away from, I represent the Milton area, I represent Mountain Green, because that's not what a Planning Commission is. They're the experts in Morgan County code that do not represent the people in an elected capacity, but they're appointed by the commission to give direction for the betterment of the entire county. So I don't know if that's helpful, but I just think-
Yeah, that's a good reminder.
It's good to remember that.
Do we offer any training for them on the code?
Yes, we do. And, and so, and, and that's something that was talked about, maybe not at the last planning, but two or three Planning Commission meetings ago, where we're actually going to have our, um, Appeal Officer come in and provide training. His name's Craig Call. He was the first Ombudsman for the state of Utah and wrote the book on land use, literally. It's called Ground Rules. And so he'll be coming in to train on general land use in Utah as well as specific to our code. So, so we do provide that training and our code actually mandates a certain amount of training per year.
Awesome.
And so, but, but I just like to bring that up because I think that some, from Planning Commission meetings I've been a part of or observed, a lot of angst exists when they feel like they represent a certain area and it causes more division rather than looking at our code and, and our county as a whole. And so that's why I'm bringing it up is because I think it is just a matter that has been misunderstood, leading to bad impacts on our county from my perspective.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blocker, did you say there was a third? Or James?
I was going to say-
I, I go by James, but my, my email's Jimmy, so I can see why you thought that.
Sorry, James.
No, no worries. Um, thanks so much for giving me the opportunity to, uh, address you and, um, introduce myself. I've done this a couple of times now. Um, but, um, I, I'm James Sargent. I live in Mountain Green in the Highlands subdivision. Um, I've lived there for almost a year and a half now. Um, and I just love it. Like, I, I feel so lucky every day to live where I live. Um, I know Commissioner Nickerson said he doesn't want to live there, but I, I love it.
I, I did live there. I wanted to be out, as Debbie said, that, that green space, that open space-
No, I, I get you. But, and I wasn't offended. I just, I disagree. Um, I think it's a wonderful place to live. And, um, I think maybe the, the most impactful thing that has maybe driven me here tonight is I used to live in Woods Cross and I lived there for about three and a half years. And the reason I moved was because I got so tired of the road noise next to my house, the airplanes flying all over me, the tar smell, the oil refineries, the lights, you name it. I mean, I know that's part of city, some city living, no offense to people who live in the city, but, um, it was especially bad where I lived, to the point where I had to move, even though it wasn't really financially to my advantage to do so. Um, but it just got me thinking about how that kind of thing can happen. And I think that with all of the growth going on and, and everything happening in this county and, and all of the smaller surrounding counties, I grew up in Summit County, so I'm familiar with some of those issues. Um, I just think that it's so important that we, we think about the future generation and the, and the people that, um, are going to come after us, um, so that we can create and build communities that, that are, you know, um, promote good mental health, promote, you know, pride in where you live. And I think that's probably the main, um, the main reason that I'm here. And I, I know that I don't have the experience as some of the other candidates, um, but I have a deep desire to learn, a deep desire to research, and I feel like I can offer a fresh perspective on the issues facing the county. Um, I try to be involved and, and educate myself on the, the issues going on. I don't know, probably half of it, but I try to stay, stay informed. And, um, I just want to have the chance to be able to give back and serve, uh, serve the place that I love, um, in a way that I think will be very beneficial. Is there any questions?
Go ahead, Mike.
I'll do a question this time. Um, James, can you tell us what you believe are, or maybe the, some of the biggest land use challenges that are facing Morgan County? Perspective?
Um, I'm probably not as qualified to answer it as, as, as many of you are and some of the people who have spoke before me, but from what I envision, I mean, there's, there's growth everywhere. And there's a lot of, especially in Mountain Green where I live, there's a lot of changes happening, a lot of them good, some of them maybe not so good. Um, but it's, uh, I, I view this chance to be on the Planning Commission as an opportunity to research the code and, um, figure out the ways that we can, um, enforce it, but also be able to make it a better, a better place to live that doesn't have all of the things that, you know, the people that move here want to get away from. We don't want to bring that back to where, to where we are. So, um, I know that town homes were mentioned earlier. I, I, when I see that, um, coming up, I, I agree. Um, I think, I, I wish there was more, I would like to see more single family homes for people like, you know, people like my nieces and nephews who are just starting to get married and want to find somewhere to live, you know, and, and entry level, um, what do you call it? Uh, starter home. That's like unheard of now. And I'm, it just always makes me wonder why. It shouldn't be like, it shouldn't be that way. Um, and I, I think that that's, there's things that we can do to, to, to bring in that kind of housing for people is, uh, would be really good and, and what we should do.
Thank you.
Do you have any time restraints with your job or?
No. So I actually, um, I work from home. I'm one of those people that, from COVID, I kind of lucked out and got to be able to do that. And so I have a lot of time to, to be able to attend meetings. I don't see any conflicts. I, 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 I don't have any conflicts time-wise for attending all of the meetings. Um, that was mentioned earlier about training. I would love that opportunity to, to be trained because I know there's a lot that I don't know. Um, but I think it would be a great opportunity to, to learn and I, I look forward to, to be, to doing that if given the chance.
And there's so much, I don't know, talk about being under qualified. But yeah, you seem like you would just get it just like that. You seem like a, a smart person.
Thanks.
You're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So how does this work?
Do we want to nominate now or hold over for another two weeks and nominate after we've heard the last one?
Well, she withdrew.
She withdrew.
So it's just-
So I, I probably, I would think we would push, whatever, whichever way you guys want to do. I would probably-
I'm fine. Either way.
Move forward.
Planning Commission's been waiting a while already.
Okay.
So I'll make, or do we make a motion or how does that work?
You can have discussion. You can, so you can have discussion, you can make a motion. It's whatever you want to do.
One thing that, um, that was brought up during this was the possibility of alternates. So that if somebody's out, I think we've got some good candidates that whoever becomes the, kind of the, I guess, the primary, I would like to see some, some people that have applied maybe become alternate so that they can learn, um, be present at the meetings, go to the trainings so that, you know, people are up to speed, you know, and, and, I mean, how we help them to feel, yes, that they'd be like an alternate as like in our portfolios, but that they feel they're part of the commission that they, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I, I'd, I'd like to see that so that as people do have to travel, you know, maybe they've got a family vacation, they're going to go on it and somebody can step right in, you know? And I would hope that these people, people would be willing to take on that task. I think that, that's a, a great idea to have an alternate.
That would require a code amendment. And so, um-
I thought we had already put that in the code.
No.
I think it was discussed.
It's not in our current, maybe it was discussed. It's not in our current code. And so if, if that was something to be done, and then we'd update the bylaws to reflect that as well. And so, but, but that would require, um, directing staff to create a text amendment and then have it go through Planning Commission and County Commission because it is under the Title 15.
I just, I just think we've had some good candidates throughout, you know, these last few. It's, I, I think people that are wanting to serve could come and if they're willing to take that time and, and if that's something that we want to do, I, I think that gets people kind of up to speed. So if something does happen, if we have somebody that all of a sudden there's a tragedy and they can no longer fulfill their spot, we have somebody that can step right in and just keep it moving. Um, just like we do in ours where we have an alternate on every portfolio. Um, that's kind of, I don't know how you guys feel, but-
Yeah, I love that idea.
Yeah, sounds great to me.
I do too, because I, we wouldn't be in the situation we are in right now with a whole new Planning Commission if, if we would have had a couple of alternates that have been trained and been going to meetings and things like that. Obviously, they need to be, um, compensated for, for what they do and things like that. So, but I would, I definitely think that's a great idea. I appreciate Debbie bringing that up. I think it's a, it's a good idea.
How many, um, I'm assuming that's going to be a task to staff to draft that. So I'm asking how many alternates you would like?
Two.
Two?
Two's plenty.
Okay.
Who's that staff?
That would be Josh, but-
Josh, sometimes Janet, um-
Sometimes Katie.
So I'm just, I'm just wondering where, with Josh being as far backed up as he is, I don't know who else-
I'm happy to task that. I'm happy to draft it and have Janet legally as, give it seventeen more words.
Yeah, but you've got a ton of things going too.
I also have ChatGPT.
Should be a fairly simple change.
Yeah, I don't think this will be a, a major change either. Um, and, and I'll talk with Kate and Janet about it too, to say, you know, is it an alternate for any position? Because each commissioner gets to appoint or, or nominate someone for their area. So it may just be the alternates for the at-large. But that's something to consider as you're thinking about it is, is it, you know, we're not going to have five alternates for each area.
Well, we could also-
And maybe it's just an alternate for a short period of time until it's filled.
If, if it's not at-large, then that gives that commissioner time to-
Yeah.
-find their spot.
Okay.
So two alternates with essentially at-large because they're stand-in term length, any same as?
The same as the other-
Same as the other-
-Planning Commission.
Okay.
And then while we're doing that, we might as well update the bylaws to change the voting position.
Okay.
I'm assuming they have to apply as an alternate?
We'd have to post it, yeah.
We'd have to post it and it'd have to be done.
But just like we did with this one, we pulled all the previous. Okay, I got my marching orders. Um, so there's a nomination for Leslie to be planning, no.
It was already written in there.
It was there. I saw it.
I nominate Leslie.
I got a text so fast when she found that.
Respectfully deny that one.
Well, I'd love, I wish we could just nominate all three of them to be on the two alternates and the commission member tonight because I think they're all very qualified. Happy to, any other thoughts?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move we appoint Travis Taylor to the Planning Commission as an at-large member.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I, is there a second?
I mean, I guess we can second for the sake of discussion if you want to do that. It sounds like there might be other thoughts too.
Okay.
I'll second it for the sake of discussion so we can talk about it if you want.
Okay.
Okay.
Thoughts? Obviously, we had some hesitation here. So we must have had some other people thinking they were going to nominate someone, so.
Go ahead, Mike.
No, I can see you have something to say.
I personally would like to have a different person on there, but you know, hey, we each have our own.
Well, it sounds like we have several of you that are hesitant, so.
Do you want to call a vote and then go to the next or what do you want?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blocker and a second by Commissioner Newton. All in favor?
Aye. I didn't think that was much discussion.
There wasn't much discussion.
I, like someone else.
All right. We have two ayes and three no votes. So well, I'll look for another motion.
That's an aye if it's a no vote.
He voted aye.
Oh, you voted aye.
I voted aye. I'll look for another motion then.
Go ahead. I'll let you.
She's over here telling me I need to say Leslie just, just to give you a hard time.
I really think Leslie ought to, along with all of her other words, I don't think she could do it all.
Right? That you're legally elected.
I, I will say this. I, I spent six years on the Planning Commission, um, myself. I served there and learned an awful lot. Um, the only person that's still around that was, well, I guess Steve is still there, isn't he? Steve and Debbie are, are the two that were there, um, for a very long time. And I learned a lot from, from both of them, but particularly from Debbie. She, she led that group for a very long time. So I, I appreciate her, her thoughtfulness and what she's done, um, in the past. And that's who I would nominate to take that place. Now, again, I like both these other applicants too a lot. So I like the idea of, of the alternate and bringing them in on that. I think that's great, but that's, so I guess that's my motion would be to appoint Debbie Sessions as the-
And I can agree with that. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Newton and a second from, of a nomination for Debbie Sessions, a second from Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
So.
Aye.
I, I gotta hear.
Oh, sorry.
Are you an aye?
I'm an aye.
Okay, so we have the three ayes. So, motion passes.
And you can still ask for opposed. You didn't on the first one.
Is there any, is there any opposed?
And I say aye? Or are we?
It'd be aye.
Yeah, aye or aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay.
Not that I'm opposed against Debbie.
I, I think we have, we have the alternates because they're both, both candidates are good.
I will get that done as quickly as possible.
Chair, did you vote?
Aye. I said aye.
Are we spelled Debbie L E S? All right, let's, so now we're going to item six.
Okay.
Thank you.
F six, thank you for coming. F six, Casey.
Thank you, James.
Please state your name for the record.
Casey Bayacre.
Okay, thank you.
Sounded like you were swearing him in.
Casey- Casey, before, before we get started, let, let's take a little break.
Move to have a recess.
Oh, good, I can print stuff, Jeremy. Oh, Sessions.
Casey will resume, go ahead.
Okay. Oh. Can you move to the, the other side? Oh, the firefighter, sorry about that. My gosh. Okay, so, sorry. First, I didn't look forward to that. Sorry about that. Um, so Boyd brought to my attention that there is a local public safety and firefighting surviving spouse trust fund. I believe the cost is about a hundred dollars per employee that would be eligible, so it would be all of our.
Per year, per month?
Year, per year, yes. And so it would be all of our sheriffs that are, are benefit eligible and then Boyd as our one firefighter that would be eligible for this. And what it does is if there were to be a, a death of one of our public safety or firefighters, then they, their family would be entitled to receive uh health insurance and then the, the trust would actually pay for their portion of the the medical, dental vision, all of that.
That's a death in.
In line.
In line, okay.
On duty, yeah.
So we're talking about two thousand dollars a year roughly?
Roughly, yes.
And it looks like we did this in the past, but for some reason stopped doing it and we don't know why.
Correct.
Uh, in twenty twenty, it looks like was the last payment made on that.
Yes.
So there's no issue with us rejoining at this point if we chose to do that?
I don't believe so.
No back pay, no?
This seems like a no-brainer for two thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Garrett, if you want to go through the contract, maybe you have already.
I have.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there any issues you can see?
No issues with the contract.
Right. And if, if you want me to pay the hundred bucks, I'd be glad to. Um, I just can't be in the contract, so. Yeah, I'd be more than happy to reimburse the county for my share anyway.
It seemed to me like it was just like an oversight, it just got lost somewhere.
Yeah.
You should have been budgeting.
I think that's a, like Mike said, kind of a no-brainer, kind of a benefit to our first responders.
So, that being said, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the agreement for the local public safety and firefighter surviving spouse trust fund cost sharing agreement and approve the funding to pay for that. We haven't budgeted, I, I guess I would probably take this from.
I could go under benefits.
The wage and benefit adjustment. I think that's probably the best place for now.
Would we just shift that to his, their budget item years ago?
Well, it would come from that benefit package that we were, fifty thousand that we'd set aside.
Yeah, we can take it out of that for this year, but, but moving forward, I guess the question is where do we pull that out of?
Do we have?
I would just increase their benefit line and consider this a benefit, so we'd increase it by a hundred dollars for each of those employees, right?
So we're just going to their budget each year?
We can just add that into their benefit line item.
Make sure we do that. Yeah, that's, yeah, make sure that happens.
Well, it needs to have a line item, budget line item, doesn't it?
It, it will, yeah, it will next year anyway.
Budget line item, so we know that it's. Okay, so my motion still stands to do that and transfer the funds from, it'd be the same number that we used for the previous transfers.
Ten forty-one fifty-five twenty.
I'll second it.
Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, Casey?
So we have talked about PTO quite a bit, the resi, I guess, I went back and this would be seventy-five percent of sick time converted into PTO and then a hundred percent of vacation time. And when we went over the employees, uh, we, we sent that spreadsheet, I believe Leslie sent it over with the amount of employees that had over five hundred and between one and five hundred and there were, you could see there were just a handful, I believe it was less than twenty total employees that had over a hundred hours of sick time. And so conversion would.
Your hand has a lot more fingers than mine, twenty.
He took his shoes off.
Yeah. I pick things up with my feet. Twenty-eight, sorry, twenty-eight. Many people's hands fulls. So twenty-eight employees, so it's really, we're not close to the cap that I, I have proposed in here for most employees. Do you have any questions about?
So we had talked about having them make a decision, is that how we're doing it or is it a, is it a mandatory thing, what I?
We talked about the, the ability to either opt in or opt out. My understanding was we had talked about they get a one-time chance to make that decision and all new employees would automatically be opted into that, was that correct?
That's correct, and I believe we talked about they have to have us over, I, we didn't set a number.
We were gonna set a threshold and say.
I think about if we had, at, anyone over three hundred hours of sick time could choose to stay on the old plan just so that some of the employees that have, I know one employee has over nine hundred hours. If they didn't want to lose all of that, they could and, and like I said, it's not too, too many employees that have that much sick time.
So if they stay on that plan, on the original plan that they have, when they retire, do they get that sick leave or do they not?
They do not get the sick leave paid out, it would only be the vacation payout.
And the vacation payout is capped, correct?
It's not on the current plan. The only cap that we have is a rollover from one year to the next, which is a hundred hours. So it's as much as they can accrue.
That year plus a hundred hours.
Correct.
This does change that cap of what we pay out and increases it slightly.
So that's just so that we have a cap so that if somebody rolls over a hundred hours and then waits to retire until December, that we're not out uh, two hundred and uh twenty hours or, or more. And so this just has a a cap so that we were not um caught off guard in December if somebody chose to do that.
So in reading this, and I just want to clarify it, if they by chance say, oh, I've got a hundred hours or eighty hours, whatever it might be, and they decide to take off the last two weeks in December and retire on the first, that stops that according to what I read it here, yeah.
Well, their department head or elected would still have to approve that two weeks of vacation regardless. Cause there are certain offices that we know can't take off the last couple of weeks of the year just due to workload.
But I believe on the second page is maybe what Commissioner Fackrell was referring to, if I remember right.
The hundred and sixty, excuse me, hundred and sixty hours is the max that we pay out.
Oh.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it says on termination of employment up to hundred and sixty hours. If an employee who has worked, has over a hundred and sixty hours of venues PTO gives notice, takes time off through the notice, the amount of time taken off will be deducted from the hundred and sixty hours to be paid out.
Yeah, so that's just so employees, like you said, don't take off a month and then retire and then we're paying them out a hundred and sixty, if that makes sense.
Is this a one-to-one payout?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I know a lot of institutions like at the school district, if like, I've got twelve hundred hours and I get paid nothing, so if I don't use it, I lose it, but other departments, they get like fifty percent paid out, so if they have five hundred hours, they get fifty percent of it paid to try to incentivize them to use them and not just bank them till the very end and then, you know, so I was just want to make sure that is one-to-one.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Okay, thanks for changing that, so Mike didn't blow a cap again.
Casey and I had a separate conversation before this and I said we agreed to the seventy-five percent, not the hundred percent. So we're on the same page and, and I do appreciate the work that's gone into it. I know there's been a lot and it's taken a little bit of time, but that being said, Mr. Chair, I would move.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Commissioner Newton. Is there, I guess, is there any hesitancy if I did add maybe one more paragraph that says employees will be able to choose whether to stay on this, all new, all new hires will be under this, but anyone who was hired before the date of this resolution get, have to make a choice within two weeks or something like that of which.
They're hired before the resolution and they have greater than three hundred hours of sick leave accrued, then they can choose. If they've only got twenty hours of sick leave, we just want them to convert to the new system, does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and so I think if we can just add that in at the bottom so that it's clear, there's no
Clean it up.
Be good.
Yep.
Question, thank you.
And I think we make that date as of today.
Okay.
Yeah, effective date as of today.
I'm also second it.
I, I haven't made the motion yet, but I'll make it really quick.
You finished it, I thought.
Seconding motions that haven't been made, this is great.
I would do the move the, the, the resolution too.
Oh, well, then make the motion and I'll second it. We're just trying to get this done here. All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve resolution CR twenty-five dash thirty-one, changing the county employee paid leave policy and the county employee handbook. With the um changes discussed this evening that um Garrett will add, including the timeframe and option to opt out.
Since you're going for it.
No, I was just messing with you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay.
That was the only one I could.
I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Blocker, so I'll change that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm not putting sugar in your basket.
Thanks, Casey, appreciate your work on that, Honorable Leslie.
Our newest planning commissioner.
Bear Lake suntan.
It was wonderful, bad mosquitoes though. So I'm just bringing the annual fraud risk assessment before you for approval. Um, Garrett did point out one mistake that I made on number one, that should be two hundred points. And I just highlighted that. Um, we do not have a policy for cash receipting and deposits, so we got a zero there. And did everyone take their training?
Yes.
Okay, so we can put twenty. Okay, so we can put twenty points in there.
I have a question for you on that.
Okay.
Last year we had the same thing with cash receiving and deposits. I thought we were gonna make a policy.
I did.
And so what happened to it?
I gave it to the treasurer as a draft because I don't know the exact policies of her office, but I gave her the one UAC gave us and I gave her two other examples. I did it again two weeks ago.
So we need the treasurer to complete that and get it back to us so we can fix this, sounds like.
So two hundred on that top line? Yes. And then you said on the cash receiving leave at zero and then on section five, twenty points? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So that puts us at...
One ninety-nine?
Isn't there one other about having an onboard CPA? Oh, yeah.
That's one of the questions on the, yeah, on the questionnaire.
Part of the management team?
Yes.
We have, we have a CPA as part of our management team?
Well, it says CPA CG.
Oh, he counts as part of the management team even though he's contracted?
Correct.
Oh, that's cool.
Yep.
Okay, so we're in the very low category.
That's what I got, three ninety-five. But it does, oh, it goes up there.
Three ninety.
So she's three hundred, right?
Three ninety over three ninety-five.
That's staying near a perfect score, that's great.
Man, I would have killed for a score like that in high school.
We need to action anything here? Do we have to approve the risk assessment? Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the twenty-twenty-five fraud risk assessment that's been completed.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm now bringing before you the approval of tax rates for twenty-twenty-five. When we set our budget for the last fall for twenty-twenty-five, we did not do a budget increase. So the tax commission took our budget amount and divided it by the amount of total taxable value of all the property in the county and that's how they came up with our rate. I'm just here seeking approval of those rates so we can...
Did that go up or down?
It went down.
It, it floats down. If you don't increase the budget, the valuations go up, the rate goes down.
Values go up, rates go down.
I have a question on that. I know it has the county assessing and collecting. What about the multi-county that's collecting and assessing? Cause that's on there. I mean, it's not on here.
I'm still waiting for the state to set that rate. They're waiting for all the other counties to get their rates set, so I can't...
Cause I thought that was limited to a certain amount.
Yeah, the state sets that, so that'll be done later this week.
This doesn't show us our surplus above and beyond, does it?
No, not yet.
We don't get that till fall?
Yeah, that's right. I should know when the next little bit, what that will be, but I don't at this point yet. They're waiting for all the entities to input their rates.
So a question I have is, is on another question anyway, flood control. It says on there that it's the maximum allowed by law, or maybe it's just maximum by law. It says sufficient, so is it really sufficient for us or not? Because that does not seem like much, twenty-nine thousand dollars a year.
That's twenty-nine more than we spent this year.
This year, but two years ago we spent three hundred times.
We're in a flood plain study and we did the Peterson Road, Peterson Bridge project.
Yeah.
You've spent like a heaven of millions of dollars last year and this year. Well, then you'll need to increase that budget if you want more money. Cause that's how they come up with the rate.
No, I'll do it the other way.
Is there a deadline on approving this? Yes, it has to be done by the twenty-second of June. Cool. So today.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Morgan County certified tax rates as calculated by the State Tax Commission. General fund of point zero zero one three six seven, library of point zero 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 one zero six, flood control point zero 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 zero, zero nine, capital improvements point zero 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 five, health point zero 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 seven eight, and the county assessing and collecting point zero 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 two three six.
What's seconded?
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion's unanimous. Okay. Honorable Garrett Smith.
All right, we do have representatives from the Wasatch Peaks Ranch Road and Fire District, but this is an interlocal agreement, well, it's an addendum or in addition to the interlocal agreement that we have. We have the fire services agreement. And the last meeting, we were really close, but there was some questions that I was working through with Johnny Miller, who is the CEO of USIP. And so we sent some language over, they reviewed it, sent some red lines back, and then we reviewed those red lines and it all looked good, so we've gone back and forth. And as far as what was in the packet, if we can scroll down to the insurance.
Which is?
It's, I believe it's number eight.
What page are we on?
It's coming first, been seven?
Yeah, seven right there. So... So that's the red line I had sent back. And I guess just for everyone's understanding, we're part of an indemnity pool and so it's not insurance in the typical way insurance is understood. And so rather than, I guess, having those insurance provisions, we, we had the, both parties will maintain insurance or self-insurance, which is more what the USIP is. It's reimbursement if we have a valid claim. The language that was added to that in our red lines back and forth that wasn't in the packet is it says, "In the event either party has determined to maintain self-insurance coverage, such party shall maintain sufficient reserves to meet its obligations under the terms of this agreement", which our claims under the bylaws and our participation with USIP are above and beyond what they were requesting or what the proposed language was for insurance. And so we're just acknowledging that. And then it also says, "The county shall also maintain workers' compensation insurance covering all county personnel, providing services under this agreement in compliance with all applicable laws and regulations", which we do as well, and that's through USIP that they have coordinated those, that workers' comp insurance. If we go down now to number nine, rather than we renamed it to governmental immunity, because it's not the typical indemnification, because government entities under the Government Immunity Act don't indemnify the way that you typically would. And so the only change that, that we made or that was made after this went out into the packet is that second sentence that reads, "There are no indemnity obligations between the parties". That was just removed, cause we're talking about the government immunity under the act itself. So other than that, and the similar changes that were made in the lease agreement, it's all the same as what was in the packet. And I know we've discussed it at, at least three meetings now, unfortunately, but we, we finally got it right. We also have the chairman of the WPR RFD here, if you have questions.
So I'll just make a comment. This has been a long time coming and a lot of work and I appreciate the patience and effort on WPR's part and on our county attorney's part to, to get through this.
And just clarify, Road and Fire District, so it's the WPR RFD.
RFD, Road and Fire District. That was something that, you're right, and I'm glad you mentioned that, cause it's something that we've talked about in previous discussions, that the public needs to be aware of and understand, is that this agreement is with the Road and Fire District. It's a, it's a political entity, not the developer directly. And, and I believe it benefits both the, the district and the county. And we try to work with other districts within the county as well to benefit them. We've done work with the sewer district to try to benefit them. We do work with Mountain Green Fire District to, to benefit them. And so just want to be clear that, that this isn't just a, an agreement to benefit a developer, it's an agreement to benefit landowners and homeowners as well, so.
Well, there's, there's a lot of homeowners from Peterson that are gonna be grateful that they can get insurance again.
Yes, this is gonna be huge for our, our project to, to expand emergency services across the county and, yeah, provide opportunity.
It's gonna be less expensive than a credit.
Yes, and it's gonna end up costing us a lot less than building a new station in Portland, so we appreciate the efforts. I guess that being said, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve the finalized interlocal agreement between Morgan County and Wasatch Peaks Ranch Road and Fire District as currently listed.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You bet. You're welcome to.
I, I'm Gary Durk. I'm the president of the Road and Fire District of WPR. I just want you to know, we're really blessed to have Boyd and his team. Kate's been a great support, Garrett as well, Janet, everybody was involved. But Boyd at every juncture has looked for ways to dramatically improve service, response time, and being very frugal on every dollar, I can assure you of that. So Boyd is doing a really first-rate job and we're really pleased to have him as our fire chief here in the county. Thank you. Just wanted everybody to know, he's got every penny pinched, so thank you.
He knows how I am.
We are on F twelve.
Okay, as you know, Melissa Porter during her public comment kind of explained what's happening in this area of Mountain Green. And her and several other members of the community reached out to me and UDOT themselves, asking what can be done to help make this area a safer place for the residents there and everyone that uses that, that road. So Carrie Jacobson from UDOT, she was very helpful. And she, UDOT's agreed to paint double yellow lines and do a traffic study of all left-hand turns north of Old Highway Road between Sinclair and the on-ramp to eighty-four. They've also agreed to lower the speed limit from forty-five to forty miles per hour in this area if the county will purchase two speed feedback signs. And before, they wanted us to install them as well, but Carrie's come back to me and said that UDOT will install them if we will just purchase them. And they would also like us to increase law enforcement presence in that area to help reduce or to help with the speed compliance. So I'm asking for the, now Brett gave us, gave me a bid for the feedback signs. One feedback sign costs three thousand six hundred and seventy-two. This is solar with data. And twelve months of iCloud is included. So we would need two of those, which would be seven thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. So I'm asking the commission to approve this. And I don't know what fund, what would it come out of?
Well, we'd have to get three quotes.
So have you got?
Cause it's over five thousand.
Three bids, yeah.
Yeah.
This is through the UDOT website.
Oh, it's state contract?
It's state contract.
Is there a cost to the, the data, just that we'd have to look, I mean, I'm sure it's minimal, but do we know what the cost for the data package every twelve months for the cloud? Or is that something UDOT would pick up at the end?
That would be UDOT.
Well, the, the data just tells us like speed of vehicles going by, right? Is that the type of data it's collecting? How many vehicles were over this and average speed and that sort of thing? So.
Shows them what they're going and if they're going over.
Those I always walk around when I, when it's flashing at me.
So before you, before we, Kate Dickman reached out to me this week or last week, I can't remember which one it was, and she, WHS would like to give us a grant of five thousand dollars for, if we will use it for safety in our community. And when this came forward, I thought, well, that would be something that I could report back to Kate and see. That's, that area, that's, they wanted to see something that would improve the safety for our children and our community. And I think, man, that's, that's a great.
Yeah, and I know a lot about what UDOT goes through, cause everybody wants this kind of sign on their street, right? Which is, which would be impossible. So what, the reason UDOT does it this way, cause they can't buy all the signs for everybody. So if you'll buy the sign, so if a community will buy the sign, I'll give you an example. Have you been through Randolph? You ever been to Bear Lake? They've got the same kind of sign and they were one of the first to have it. They actually, the town got together and had a bake sale paid for the sign. UDOT put it in. So I'm just, I'm just coming up to tell you this, so everybody knows, if you want one, get your community together and the county might, you know, the county would put one in if you'd pay for it, or the state, just like the same deal.
So Brett, we need to get one together for Porterville.
Exactly. Blaine's asked me about that, well.
I think given the recent events in this area, this is, absolutely needs to happen and as quickly as possible. If we can get some grant funding to help reimburse us, great, but I think we ought to just pay for it and get it done, get it ordered, and then we can deal with a grant after the fact. I, I'm sure that they'd be willing to reimburse if that's the case.
Well, I, I agree. I don't think that's, that would be a problem.
Or maybe they'll take it and put it on another area that we have a safety problem in Morgan County.
Also use opioid. Settlement funds for this too.
Oh, well, then that's where we ought to take it from, is from the opioid funds. We've got plenty of funds there.
I've, I've got a bull wipe at home and I'll take it down, get them state guys working, cause they're...
Yeah, I was gonna say, how long would it take them to do that? Once they...
Give them a couple of days to put it in.
Okay, so.
So we just gotta get it ordered so they can...
Yeah, they'll call a blue state guy.
How long would it take to get here once you order it?
I don't know, I can't remember how long. I'll have to look and see. I bet it'd only take a couple of weeks to get it if they didn't have it. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't take long.
The sooner the better, right?
And then we're gonna drop ours to thirty-five, remember, from, as soon as we get that, the crosswalk in. And that should be in by the end of the month.
Thanks.
Crosswalk should be in by the end of the month?
What's that?
The crosswalk should be in by the end of the month?
Yeah. Lee's there, the crosswalk, the painting, be the flashing signs and we'll paint the, paint the road. Should be, should be done by July first.
Great.
So Commissioner, we are working on creating a restricted fund for opioid settlement funds because it's been going into Sundry. So may I make a request that we pull it from services not otherwise classified under non-departmental to be journal entered when we get the opioid restricted fund up and going?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll look for a motion then.
I think Realeen should do it. So you're gonna have to help me, so.
So to come from non-departmental.
Okay, I, I move that we approve two road safety signs in the total of seven thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars, coming from the non-departmental.
And then journal entered into the opioid.
And journaled entered into the opioid.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blocker and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous?
And thank you for taking the lift on that, Commissioner. Okay, just, all right, there, and thank you for public comment. We appreciate you. The next one, Commissioner, you do not have to do as Board of Equalization because you're approving the agreement for the hearing officer as to his pay. Garrett has given me some red lines that are grammatical that I need to add. And then there is a change from what was in the packet. I misunderstood and I had placed in the packet the version right here that you're seeing, I misunderstood, and I had placed in the packet the version right here that you're seeing, where it says seventy-five dollars per appeal. It's actually seventy-five dollars per hour. And I, I do have that corrected in the sign, the version sign, should this be passed? But I just, since that's kind of a glaring change to what was in your packet, I wanted to make you aware of that.
So it is, it is per hour and not per here, per?
Correct.
How long did it normally take?
Two hours.
Oh, depends on how many.
Yeah, some not even. Yeah. That's why I feel like he's kind of shortened himself. Do you need a power cord?
I have one, but.
So that is a, a, a change to what was in your packet. Just want to make you aware.
I wrote it on my notes there after that. And that's the only question I have, is that.
Anyone else have a question? Any other questions? Okay, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve or appoint Brad Neff to the Board of Equalization.
Isn't it more?
Or, just. By Resolution CR twenty-five dash zero-one dash BOE.
Yep.
You're approving the contract. He's already been appointed, and so you're just approving the contract.
I move that we approve the contract for Brad Neff by Resolution CR twenty-five dash zero-one dash BOE.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, this next one was postponed from the previous meeting. Just a reminder, this was, also has a public hearing.
Okay. So, any discussion on this?
We wanted to bring it up because there were only three of us here last time, or four, Reilly, but we wanted all of us here to discuss it. I personally would like to see it happen. And I know we've had one person comment that they didn't want to see it happen, because they think we're overtaxing the people. This is not necessarily a P, um, a Morgan County, um, tax. It's a statewide tax that comes from people that come to our county also. And we are ending up, I, I mean, this is a tax, a sales tax, where we can generate enough to take care of some of these buildings and some of these other public safety things that we need. And we don't have to use it every year. It's a fund that can grow. It's a restricted fund. And it will, it can grow in perpetuity, I think. I don't know how long in perpetuity, but it's something we can do with this that will help us to get a public safety building possibly. It's for infrastructure. And it's not for the employees' wages. It's for infrastructure and equipment and, and those kinds of things that we can build within our county. And instead of taking from the taxpayers, I want to have it be spread out amongst all people. Because I know, and I know that there's many of us, that we go down to other counties and we pay a higher sales tax than we do. And even if we raise this by a point three, we're still lower than all the other counties, except very few like Paiute County. And they don't have very much infra, I mean, sales tax coming in anyway. So this would just help us out in our total tax revenue. And I just don't want to raise any kind of property tax, period. And if I can do this without having to bring, take money out of our, our pockets. Because then we have a choice. We have a choice to spend if we want. If we go down to Weaver County and go down to Sam's Club or Costco, we're spending money in their county. It's our choice. If we spend here in Morgan County, it's our choice. And I hope that most of us will be spending money here in Morgan County. And so my reason for it is, is with the goals that we have in the county and in tourism, if people, if we can get them to stay here and stop, they will be paying the taxes. They'll be helping us with this public safety issues that we have. And we do have some. And, um, this will just help offset our having to ever raise the property taxes. It would raise us to a seven point zero for the county and.
I'm gonna take the devil, devil's advocate, because I, I think we've taken advantage of every, every dang sales tax that we could take advantage of since I've been here. You've been for every one of them.
No, I was actually against one. Robert and I disagreed as well.
But we've, we've raised, we've raised our sales tax like three or four times since I've been here. And I just, I don't think it has to be done right now. I don't think, I don't think we need it right now. And I just, I, I agree that we do get some of our money from other people, but it does raise the taxes on our, on our community too. So a tax is a tax.
Yes.
You can choose whether you want to buy a car or not, or where.
And I can't get away from property taxes either.
No, you're right, but we have, we're barely getting into the situation where everybody's expecting what we've been telling them for a long time. Wait, wait, WPR is gonna help us with our property taxes. We aren't gonna have to do this. I don't see where we're gonna have to raise our budget drastically, and we should be receiving more monies. So I don't see our property taxes going up unless we are poor in the way we budget myself, so. I just feel like it's, I'm just taking the, I'm just taking the opposite side. I, a tax is a tax, and we, we've raised it many times, so. And we just raised it again last, last meeting.
Actually, that one isn't us.
Unless you stay in a hotel or something.
Not unless you stay in our hotel. That's the only way. We're staying in Airbnb in our county.
Our campground.
Campground. Those are the only ones that we raise. Those are other people that pay it completely. So one thing within this tax, it is a restricted fund. Completely restricted. Can't be used for anything but that. Public safety. I don't want us to have to come up with three hundred thousand dollars to, out of, to take out of the property taxes for each area either. I mean, that we need a fire station and all the equipment that goes along with it that we're gonna eventually need to have. This here just helps offset it so that as we get older, and you can't, you're on a fixed income.
I understand your reasoning. I do. You don't, you're not, you're, you don't have.
I'm just, yeah, we have.
Selling it off. I understand the reasoning. I just, I just feel like we've done it a lot in the last while. And I don't think, it doesn't have to be passed right now as far as I understand. There's no time limit on it, is there?
I think there was.
That was short-term rental?
The other one there was.
The other one had a time limit, right?
Yeah, the other one had it, but I'm not sure if this one does.
There was, um, when this was presented by, oh, good gravy, it was a work session. Marcus Keller.
Marcus Keller.
He did mention that there is a push in the House and, and Senate to remove this as an option.
Right.
That doesn't mean it's removed. It just, the one that had a hard deadline was the short-term rental one that this commission passed last meeting.
To kind of piggyback onto what Commissioner Wilson was saying, I mean, oh, we, we've heard a lot of people, it's like, every time I go to the grocery store, the eggs, the milk, and now we want to add, and, and I understand your reasoning as well, Blaine, but I mean, that just came to my mind. I'm like, how many people can barely afford to put groceries in the, in the fridge, y- you know, and, and down to Costco and Sam's Club and whatnot, are, are they paying this point three percent down there probably?
They're not gonna pay that on top of this.
What's that?
Not for groceries. This is only a tax on anything other than food sales. Yeah, so everybody that pays for food is a three percent total tax, sales tax. They don't pay the six point seven or seven percent or whatever it is. This is on other goods.
Okay, I didn't see that in there that it was other goods. I just thought it's a sales.
The food tax, they're not gonna be increasing that. That's still three percent.
No, that makes me feel better, though.
Makes me feel better too. If I buy a car or a truck over here, yeah, it's gonna be, you're gonna pay this six percent.
Oh, this is one where, but like prepared foods, like restaurants and that, it is, okay, now I remember that.
Prepared foods was a state passed one. I mean, that was a one percent that the state actually did. It wasn't us. They just made it fair across the board, so that way you get charged the same thing for McDonald's or restaurants. You go to Taggart's or Smoke and Boxcar, now you're gonna pay a one percent tax. Instead of just one, which was sitting down at Taggart's or Smoke and Boxcar. Everybody else was not paying it. So they just made it fair. And same with the convenience store. It's fair.
Because I, I remember in the last discussion, we talked about over to Lee's where you can go get the prepared foods, you're gonna pay it, but you go grocery shopping, you're not paying.
That's right, you're not paying it.
And my kind's, you go in there, buy a sandwich, and then you're paying.
Yeah, so, I mean, I like, I like taxes that are directed towards a purpose versus general. Where, yeah, we can dip into it for this thing and we can dip into it for that thing, and then, then we've got Grandma Mary out there that all decided.
That's why we hope that we have good people sitting here, so they don't just dip in and dip in and dip.
That's right, and I'm saying we're doing it. So, so what I'm saying is, is I would rather have us a, a restricted fund that, that funds are for those purposes. Like we have the tax on the, on the roads. We've got that special one that is, that should bring us in some money just for that specific, well, it's bringing us in money for that specific thing, which is transportation. Now we've got one, another one that we could get for public safety. And that's why I'm an advocate of it, because I don't want to have to spend it out of my dollars to increase my property taxes. And if Wasatch Peaks does bring in more money for us, then fine. I don't mind. We can hold it off for a little while. But if they take it away from us, then we lost.
I know Rich County, um, really likes this option. We have so many tourists that come up there. They're using it to help fund their, their, um, fire station and EMS services. So it's, yeah, they have a lot of tourists up there.
Yeah. And we're gonna have more.
We'll have more. So I wonder if we should revisit it.
I, I personally am a little torn because I, I like the forward thinking of, of this idea. We do have a lot of use of our, our public, um, safety that is non-county resident. So it makes sense to have some funding come from sources other than property taxes. I don't love increasing any tax, to be honest with you, so that, that's where I, I'm a little bit torn. My thought is, if there's concern that the legislature's going to do something about it, well, they're not gonna do anything about it until next February.
That's true.
I think we get to our budget time this year, and let's look at it and talk about it. And maybe at that point, you know, we look at the general fund and the, and the property taxes, and maybe there's an option here where we could substitute some for the other or something of that nature. I don't know. It's worth at least a discussion. I, I emailed you all a little while ago with the county general fund property tax rate, the final rate. Just for the information of the public, from twenty twenty-four rate to the twenty twenty-five rate, it went down seven point two percent. So our rate has continued to drop. In fact, it has dropped every year since twenty eighteen. By a percentage, a couple of years ago, dropped fifteen percent.
That's awesome.
So, so our property taxes are, or at least the rate is decreasing. Unfortunately, our valuations continue to go up because they're based on sales data and unfortunate, I guess it depends on which side you're on. If you're selling a home, it's fortunate, and if, if you're not, it's maybe unfortunate, but, um, I think that's positive, and I think that's something that our residents should know. So I guess, going back to this, and I'm sorry I'm rambling a little bit here. I would, my thought would be, let's wait till budget session and talk about it. And if we decide that this is something we want to do at that point, great. And if not, so be it.
May I still suggest that we have the public hearing since we posted it and stuff?
Absolutely.
Okay, so before we go into that, if it's okay, one other thing I want to mention is we have a sales tax that currently is on the public right now. It's a point one percent. And it will be going away in four years. Okay? It'll be go away in four years. April two thousand twenty-eight, I think.
March thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine is the original.
It could be reapplied for, we could do it again.
Well.
I'm a thousand percent sure.
We'll have to bring it to the voters, because right now the state's trying to determine whether or not they want to or totally do away with it. We have not done what we see to with it. And, uh, so basically, we're gonna be hurting without that sales tax when it comes to recreation.
So, wha, wha, sorry, I just.
What do you mean, we haven't done with it?
You've got less than four years. It was April two thousand eight.
What have we not done with it? It's just my.
Infrastructure of facilities.
So I.
We're working on it.
But, but I'm just saying, it's a tax, it's a sales tax.
I would really like to discuss the ramp tax, maybe at next meeting so that, because I have full detail on that.
And I don't mind if we hold it off until the budget session, and we can discuss it then. I don't mind. I just want us to keep this in our thoughts.
All right, I'll look for a motion to go in a public hearing.
Move to go in a public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fackrell, second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now in public session. Which of the four of you want to come up?
Sorry, I didn't charge your fan.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. I just want to say that I still stand by what I said last time. It seems like there's a penny here or a penny there, and they do add up. Go and buy something. You understand it. Some of you are business people, and you have to buy things for your businesses, or it might not seem like a lot on a small item, but it, it all adds up when you're buying something larger. And it's always coming from the citizens, no matter whether they're here or outside of it. Every time you take a federal grant, every time you take a state grant, it seems like free money, but it's not. It's, it's always, and that's what I always kept in the back of my mind. These are, these are the people's dollars, and we need to, we need to weigh that in our mind before we decide to, to put another tax on them. And I know that you guys will do that. I know that you are very fair-minded about that. But it is just, it seems like it's another cent here or another cent there or a quarter of a cent here, or it just creeps up after time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, real quick, I'll, I'll just say, um, as, as far as public safety goes, I can see it really growing fastly. Especially as, as this county grows, and I know, and it's super expensive. Me personally, I'd be more than happy to pay that. We've got, we've got a lot of growth coming, and it's just gonna be getting more and more. And I don't see any citizens mining a tax like that, knowing that potentially we could have a full-time fire department, and you would get a response within two to three minutes versus our volunteers come from home, getting the apparatus and drive into the response and adding on another five to seven minutes. So currently, if you get injured or need fire, anywhere from Monday through Friday, uh, six to six, you're gonna get response right away. If you get hurt on the weekend, it's, you're gonna have a, a five to seven minutes response added on to it. And I personally don't think that's fair. Everybody should get the same treatment. So I can just see that coming down the line, so I, I'm all for it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'll look for a motion.
Move to close the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Newton, second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now back in session. If there's no more discussion, then I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move that, that we would postpone this or how would we, how do you word that? Postpone?
Correct.
Postpone. I'm sure.
County ordinance 2513.
Sorry, yeah, county ordinance, CO 2513 to budget later date.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Newton. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Your aye?
Aye on the opposition. Okay.
Are there any nays? Okay.
Uh, may I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
Um, for that future meeting, I'm sure it's in the stack somewhere, Garrett. Someone brought, I forgot which one of you it was, brought up to me checking to see with Marcus if we could pass a rate less than point three. Is that of interest to you to check on that?
We can pass one less than three, point three percent.
Okay.
But for that penny difference, I'll pay the extra penny.
Twenty? Awesome. Okay. Alrighty, sorry, next item. Uh, there was.
What's, what's, um, how hard is it to throw something out there to our community saying?
We're about to send out our short-term rental survey, which I gave you examples of on your desk, so we could totally double down on that.
I'd love, I'd love to see what they say, you know?
I'm here for it. Let's do it.
Yeah, that'd be interesting.
I pitched it to the school in city. I said, hey, if you wanna go in on the postage, like I'm already sending this out, might as well get that mobile bank for our buck. Okay, I will totally add that. Um, who wants to help me read?
On a job form, maybe.
On a job, it is a job, like if they scan a QR.
Good. So it's just a one-way postage then?
Yes. Okay, I will, um, who wants to help me review that language or do you want to come back here? Cause if it comes back here, I gotta wait two weeks and that's a route, two more weeks before.
I, I, I don't mind. Can't you just send it out to us and we can look at it?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Great.
You just post it on Morgan Moans and then everybody else.
Right?
You put the QR code on there.
The county website, okay. Um, so I sent out my non-legal version of this resolution and then Janet gave me her legal version of it this morning and so we have merged the two together. In going through this, sorry, this is the resolution for temporarily allowing sale, use and possession of alcoholic beverages by vendors at the 2025 Morden County Fair. So allowing alcohol sales on county property.
In a beer garden again?
Correct.
Well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They want to be able to do it so it could be allowed.
Throughout?
Throughout. The issue with that is if they do that, they have to have somebody posted at the exit gates to make sure that nobody leaves with an open container. And so that still has to be discussed, how that would work out. So what, I spoke with the vendor that's interested in doing this and I said, why don't we at least, cause this is a hurdle they have to get through to allow the beer, the beer sales. Let's get this done. They may choose to not do it at all based on what it's gonna take to, to do that. They may choose to do a garden, they may choose not. But this would allow them to at least move forward with licensing with the state, should they choose to do it. So they, they still have to go to the state and get a license to sell.
Just to ban again?
And, um, in going through this with Commissioner Nickerson earlier today, he pointed out that the dates you gave me are Thursday, Saturday, Sunday.
Should be Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
But I wasn't sure if we needed to leave Sunday in, if they were going to sell or possess after midnight on that, on the third.
I think you're okay.
So if you don't chug your Miller Lite by midnight.
Does that put us in a liability situation?
Maybe then you should leave it, but.
Where we're, we're in charge of making sure no one goes out drunk or with an open container?
Well.
Or both ways it does.
I, I'm more in favor of a beer garden where it's more limited in scope, just because you're gonna have kids and, and underage, I think, presenting. Like if, if you're in a more restricted area, then there can be some observation of who's drinking it as well. My worry from the liability side or, or I guess just the criminal side, is I just had a case where there was someone who was underage, who had a fake ID and, and was driving at a high rate of speed with a high BAC. And like, and that's all in the county. I just see that there's gonna be more opportunity for that, the less limited in scope and the less monitored it is.
So I did a little research and I'd like to point out that very few counties allow alcohol sales at their state fairs, at their county fairs. E- even the state fair, there's no alcohol sales.
In the open container, also, that doesn't determine BAC. Like you can go get behind a wheel, cause you've already consumed everything.
We were allowed it. Cash value is conditional.
Remind me, the last time that this commission as a body passed this was twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-two was the last time we did this.
Twenty-three.
It was not twenty-three.
No, it was twenty-two. Twenty twenty-two was the last time they did it and they did a beer garden at the time. I'm not married to it either way. I don't really care. This is just a request that's come to us and because our code says that there's no alcohol allowed on county property unless we vote to allow it, it has to come before this body. So.
So that's what all county property.
We, we know that people are bringing alcohol in and drinking it at the facility. That happens at rodeos and events like that. In speaking with the sheriff about this in the past, and I haven't spoken with him about this particular year, but in past years, I talked to him about it and his thought was similar to what Garrett shared with us in that sometimes it's helpful to be able to monitor what's going on and who's drinking. So from their perspective, they would rather know about it than people sneaking alcohol. That being said, I mean, I, I don't drink. I don't know that, I don't think anybody on this commission drinks actually. So I don't know, you know, if there's any pro or con to it, but.
I think that was an inappropriate time to crack open a soda.
Good, good timing.
That was perfect.
For the record, that is an apple fizz.
Izzy.
Fizzy, my bad.
No F, just Izzy.
Fizzy, Izzy.
Yeah, I, I'd just soon not have it there, but that's me.
Okay with that too. Like I, like I said, I'm not.
Is there any sort of data from the vendor as far as, like, do they get a lot of patrons to a beer garden versus?
Their opinion is that they, and that's why they wanted to do it across the entire place and not just a beer garden, because they felt like they would sell a lot more if they did it. Where you could just take it and go sit in the stands and drink it. They're, they're, it's the same vendor that did the beer garden last time in 2022. It seemed like it was always full when I walked past it, but I don't know how much they actually sold and according to them, they didn't, they didn't sell a whole lot. When we did it in 2022 with them, we made an agreement that the, the fair would receive ten percent of the profits. And there was a small amount that came to the, to the county fair from that.
The only difference I could see from that year to now is we have the giant screen that they could probably see, watch the rodeo while in the beer garden.
Yeah.
I think that would be the only.
And that would, may, may make a change in terms of people being willing to stay there. But again, I mean, it is what it is. So I, I'm not, uh, I don't care, to be honest with you, one way or the other. I didn't notice any difference in the behavior of people from when we did it in 2022 to last year, for example. But maybe there was some, I don't know.
I prefer not to.
So the sheriff didn't say there was like an uptick in problems or anything or from happening or not? The right group everywhere was drunk at everything you went to.
Same.
But anything, youth football games.
Lots of fights that way. Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I don't know where everybody stands on this. A couple of you said.
We got to scroll down as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If someone's gonna move to approve it, just to see the changes. So basically it, it's the same as far as quoting the county code, but then when you go down under the now there four to the next. There are.
Parameters.
Just parameters, so it's not a free-for-all. And, and it just says that now, so part of the code, they have to provide proof of liability insurance. Uh, they have to get the business license. They have to be approved with the state. But then D and E are, are more specific. Um, so designated controlled areas, age verification, that gets harder the larger the area is. So whatever that looks like, um, I, I don't think that the county would be responsible for checking. Well, I don't know, that's the hard part too, cause then if they don't staff it enough, now we're letting potentially people walk away with an open container or whatever to their car. I just think it's hard to manage. I, I had a jury trial.
If they're drunk too, it's, it's a confrontation right there. It could be a confrontation.
If they're drunk, you probably gotta have an officer come deal with it.
Yeah.
That's not a volunteer.
There's so many kids around.
And I did have a jury trial this January about furnishing alcohol to a minor and I think that that's really hard to manage, the larger the scope that you allow them to roam. Cause you can't observe and have controls and keep the youth from going in or keep the beer from going out of the garden.
So I'll make motion. I move, we oppose resolution CR 2533, allowing the temporary sale of beer on county-owned property during the Morden County Fair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Blocker and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you. Um, are you, Utah Office of Tourism Grant is coming up for renewal. We have to provide.
The co-op, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, this is, um, we have to provide a letter of support from the commission, um, because there is a match. Uh, the match comes from our tourism tax, our TRT monies. Um, I did check our fund balance to make sure we had plenty to cover that. Um, so we have that in fund balance, even if we don't make a single penny in tourism tax next year, we have that, at least that in fund balance. And then we, the commission just increased the TRT tax by point five percent in last commission meeting. So I have no concern that that will at least be recouped. Any questions? So, uh, on the UOT co-op grant, this is the grant that the state gives us specifically for advertising the county. So not for creating the content, but for actually posting the content, boosting the content, um, web ads, meta ads. Um, they will essentially pay for half of it.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the letter of support and financial commitment from TRT funds for the Utah Office of Tourism Grant application.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Okay, do we have the letter here? Because I know it has to be in.
It has to be in by Thursday.
Yeah.
Yep, I, I do have it here. It's ready to go. I even changed the date to today, June seventeen. Thank you for checking though.
Do we all need to sign it or just Matt?
Just Matt. The commission in their work session discussed, um, the modified bids, um, for the crime and fire department building. I have made copies of the two qualifying bids and placed them on your desks and labeled them option one and two, or A and B, I believe. Welcome to discuss that further. And these are the current ones, the ones, the updated ones, not the previous.
So are these apples to apples?
I, I, I'm a mathematician.
I couldn't hear what you said with that.
I say are they, are they apples to apples?
So.
As far as requirements.
Not exactly, right? Cause there are.
No, there was, one of them added a whole bunch of things that we didn't ask for in the RFP.
Well, we asked for a design build.
Correct, but we gave them specifications and they went above and beyond the specifications.
So, I was just gonna say, under the code, as long as you find them to be a qualified bidder, then you shall take the low bid. And so if they met all the requirements of the RFP, then they become a, and it's not qualified. Just give that language, a responsible bidder. And so just, I guess the determination is if you've found that they're both responsible bidders, then our code says it shall be awarded by competitive bidding after public advertising to the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, so my question then is, is stubbing utilities out of building, I, I mean, this is all we got on the one. And other than what's on the past one, which was not much. I just wanna make sure that we've gone and clearly identified which ones we, I mean, if we don't want something of one, is that gonna make a difference on the bids or? I'm just, you guys are the ones that build things and I don't build it. I hire you to do it.
Blaine, is the RFP, all we asked them to do is we set it up as an RFP. I don't know why any, I would never bid a bunch of extra stuff. You would just hope that maybe you'd have a change order if, if they got into it and said, hey, we'd really like a railing up there or something, you know? But you can't, I wouldn't bid extra stuff just to bid it.
No, when you go through a set of plans, I mean, like for me as an electrician, I mean, I count every receptacle, every outlet. I don't add any, I don't take any away. That's what you ask for, or I'd never get a bid. Cause you, that's why, yeah, they're on the, when you look at it, yeah, they're all, they're equal. But then for whatever reason, they decide to add a bunch of bonus material, which is great, but it's not.
It would be great if they were low bid.
If they were low bidding out for it and all, that'd be awesome.
They're not.
So can you ask them to remove all the extras and see what the bid would be?
That would be fair either, I don't think.
So the, in the part of the code about rejection of bids, this is what happened last time, is that they were all rejected because it didn't include some of the other things that wanted to be included. But then you have to either put it out for RFP again or you have to contact, uh, what does it say? Yeah, every responsible bidder. And so that's why all three came back in, because I think there was some clarification on whether one of them was a responsible bidder last time as well. And so, okay, here, we'll put it back out, send it, send it back in. Um, now there are times where after you award the bid, you can negotiate with the person to say, hey, we really don't want that anymore. But then the hard part about that is, is everyone, um, every contractor makes their margins differently. Uh, and I'm just saying this based on what Brett and, and other contractors have told me over the last four years, as I've sat here, is sometimes our margins are differently. And so we can't just say, well, hey, you're cheaper on this one, let's have you do this, you're cheap run. Because it's the bid as a whole that, that they make their margins on. And so even if we did say, hey, we want you to do this, but we want you to take XYZ out, they're, well, that's where I make all my margins. So I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do it.
Oh, I see, I see.
So.
Unless you negotiate it with them after you've awarded them as the lowest bidder, lowest responsible bidder.
And we have to go. And we have to go, because what I read in the code is we do not have to go with the lowest responsible bidder. We have the right to choose.
You you do have to, I I mean.
Well, I'll just read it. So it's a, this is under purchases exceeding five thousand dollars. Um, section B two, except as otherwise provided within this chapter, all purchase orders and other contracts of every kind involving amounts in excess of five thousand dollars for personal service or for the purchase, lease, rental, or sale of personal property, materials, equipment, or supplies shall be awarded. So the shall is the mandatory, shall be awarded by competitive bidding after public advertising to the lowest responsible bidder. Or in the case of the county being the seller, to the highest responsible bidder if we were on the other side.
And that's our code.
Yeah, that's our code.
State code.
Correct.
So there was.
Now, it does say that the bids can be declared unacceptable because it's incomplete. Or the bid exceeded the estimated construction cost. But at that point, then you could rebid it, or you could go back and negotiate with all of them. But if you're not rejecting the bids, you have a lowest responsible bidder and you're moving forward with the project, then you shall award it to that bidder.
So it sounds like by default it's selected, but there was discussion on not notifying the awarty until we figure out the funding on the passable grant or?
I mean, if if we're going to award the bid, we can, we can notify the awarty. I mean, we could still figure out how to fund it fully, right?
Well, we were gonna fund it without it.
We're gonna fund it without it if we can, but if we can get it, great, right? I mean, I feel like similar to the signs, like let's, let's pay for it, let's, let's figure it out. And then we can find the the funding mechanism. We have the funds. We need to cover it all, but hopefully we don't have to.
We already agreed we have the funds. We were gonna do it.
I would rather, I I think we would be more competitive on the grant if we award the bid and say, okay, contractor, we want all the plans. We want to be able to show this whole thing and submit that as part of the grant application. So we're showing that we're invested in, right? And it's shovel ready, because that was the thing in the, in the grant instructions, shovel-ready projects were were a higher priority, at least from what I read. And that's typically the way it is.
And one thing I think, Blaine, you were bringing up was that there were stubbing utilities out ten feet. I think that goes to what Mike was saying. There is gonna be some additional cost above and beyond the bid. Because once they stub that, we're gonna have to get the septic installed.
Because I mean, you get the difference between the two. Here's one of them that has only two budget-friendly fans, and the other one has proposed three. And then you've got, um, I mean.
Why did he do that?
I don't know. Well, but did we ask for two?
He did. Was specific.
But if someone.
I asked him, please, or Kate, I had Kate ask him, please be specific in what you're bidding. Here's what we're being specific about. He even put in his stuff, he even wrote down what we were specific about, and then put his bid on the next thing showing that he was.
Showing the wall insulation.
Meeting that.
Ceiling. I don't see anything on this one. So all these extra things that makes this bigger.
So I don't see, he's only bid three.
Yeah, he's been three this one too.
No, that's three blades. Three blades with four speeds. Fifty-six inch fan.
Says identify the brand and size of fans included in your bid. Proposed fan, three.
Where's the quantity? Where do you say?
That's the first page.
One fan isn't gonna change the difference in the cost difference. And and I know this is kind of.
I'm just curious why, I mean, we have one here.
What he did. I think it's crazy.
You know, I'm just, I just, I just don't want us coming to the end and it's not completely complete. With this one, the low bid, when we have to add more on to it. If we have to add more into it, then we're just making it up to that amount.
No, both of them are that way. Both of them are just stubbing utilities ten feet up.
I thought one was putting it all in. In fact, on this one, it shows that he's putting in the toilets, putting in the sinks.
No, both include that, but it's still, they're all putting it all in. But they're still only stubbing it out. We still have to get it connected and such.
But according to our code.
It says here, install supply to the plumbing fixture. So it's, in this one, it is installing.
That's, that's interior fixtures. That's correct. But it doesn't mean that that includes connecting it to the utility itself. That's just stubbing it out of the building. You still have to connect it to the septic and connect it to the water and power and gas. So we'll have all of those pieces still to do.
I mean, I'm just like, he's bid, he's bid two-tone paint. I I don't know why you'd bid two-tone paint.
I don't know. I'm not a paint person. You are.
Well, I, that's just, that's just.
If the RFP required two-tone paint and the other one didn't, then they wouldn't be a responsible bidder. And so I guess, I mean, what I'm hearing is everyone's in agreement that there's one who's not a responsible bidder and two that are. And if the two that are match the RFP, then the code requires you go with the lowest bidder.
That's how it is.
So Mister Chair, I'll move that we award the bid for the Croydon Fire Station to option number one, which will be Adams Construction Services.
A second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. It's getting late. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? It's getting late.
You better make it, make your voice heard here.
Well, I'm just, yeah, it carries anyway, but. I just, I don't think our system was fair.
Doesn't want to be on. Uh, request to postpone again, number eighteen for failing to meet our code bid requirements.
Mister Chair, I move we postpone item number eighteen till our next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
So by Commissioner Newton.
So why has that happened?
I got him down another thousand dollars, but I thought it was five thousand, like, and we wouldn't have to go out for RFP.
Five thousand for three years. And so, no, it's, well, no, it's because it's a contract for three years. So it's a fifteen thousand dollar contract. It's five thousand a year, which saves the county three thousand dollars if we go, but every party has a pooper, and that's why you invited me and I'm I'm sorry.
That's great.
He wouldn't go down one dollar, huh?
No, it it's not the one dollar. It's the term of the contract. It doesn't say five thousand annually. It just says five thousand dollar threshold. So if the contract is only twenty-five hundred, but it goes for four years, now you're.
Ten grand, ten thousand.
Yeah, or fifteen and goes for four.
Value of the total. And so we're postponing it again.
Okay, I have a motion to postpone from Commissioner Newton. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Nickerson, for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
So I somehow deleted the county manager comments. Um, I don't have a lot, but if I can just add some. So we just finished Q two, so that's why there was a lot of the budget adjustments on, um, this agenda. There's gonna be a bunch more because I, my project for Q two, um, as your county administrator manager, was to go through all of our restricted funds, and there's a lot of error that needs to be corrected, things that are put in the wrong account, et cetera. So those will be coming next meeting. And then I got an email from Ty Bailey last week. Ty Bailey, the city manager of, city of Morgan. Um, we've never been billed for water.
But when?
For this building.
I thought we had it every single week. I mean, not every single month. We've seen.
No, we pay our trash. We just don't pay water.
We pay our power.
I thought so. So I need a budget adjustment, and that'll be on there next. I just want you to be aware.
Why haven't they ever billed?
They're not gonna back charge.
Nope. They are not. They said they were doing an audit of their system and realized that we were never charged for water. And I was like, thanks. Can't we just keep going that way?
Probably because their offices used to be here.
Yeah. I, and that's what he said. Maybe that was something.
Electric rates are quite high.
So just be prepared for that budget adjustment. So that's all I have.
Do we use secondary water for our irrigation here?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
We pay its twenty-six shares.
Okay, that's good. At least we're not.
It's only.
Right.
Three hundred, four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars.
Oh, sorry. And then, um, it's redundant now because we're gonna add that three percent. But these are the samples that, um, of the short-term rental, every door direct mail that Janet directed. Um, if anyone has any comments or anything they want to add, and then we'll of course add the the three percent as well.
Awesome. We're gonna have to also look on that as far as our licensing procedures. Because if there's only forty of them that are permitted, and we're getting a hundred twenty-six. I think we got, we got a problem. So.
Just so you all know that these pins have a warning on them.
Yeah.
So these are from Carrie Stevens.
Cancer and reproductive.
Known to cause cancer in California.
Uh, those are from the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity.
These are cool.
Okay, Commissioner Blocker.
Hey, um, yesterday, or Monday, I had the opportunity to attend the Golden West Credit Union ribbon-cutting ceremony and say a few words there and welcome them into the community on behalf of the local government. Um, what a great company. The CEO, Carrie, is a great guy, and they had a wonderful turnout and a little barbecue going on and excited to have Golden West number two in the county.
Awesome.
So ribbon cutting, they're fully up and staffed and it's open.
I shared items earlier. I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Backrow.
Yeah, I just wanna report on the active trans, the WFRC active transportation. We were having in, within our ATAB group, uh, board anyway, there was, there's always, there's been discussions for the last three years and trying to get some kind of a curriculum or something into the schools and start teaching kids at a young age. Well, what's happening now is one of the school board members, the state school board members, who is active in trails and act, and active transportation. She is actually developing a curriculum so that we can maybe put it in with the school system into the elementary schools starting at that point.
A curriculum for?
Core, for bike safety.
Bike safety.
Yes, for bike safety. And, uh, we're hoping to have it by this fall. And, uh, for everybody's information, part of our TRT funds that we receive in, that we receive, it funds, not that we receive, that that are collected, funds the Utah Office of Outdoor Rec. Okay, so with it being that extra special tax, sales tax that comes in, that is, that is where we're getting our grants for the, um, for, for us to be able to do the things we do, such as them giving us two hundred fifty thou, or two hundred thousand dollars this year for our trail and, or for our multipurpose field, or for sixty-some-odd thousand last year for the trail. And for every year that we're getting that funds, those funds are part of that TRT. And, and it's not being taken away because of that sales tax. So that's where a sales tax is important. And, uh, and so that's something we need to consider. It's a special tax, sales tax that everybody's paying for. If you, by chance, if you go to a hotel down in St. George, you're gonna be paying that tax down there too. And so you do pay for it. But part of that tax is the Utah Office of Outdoor Rec, that it goes to them so they can give us back those special funds. So there's also another development that is happening within the economic development area of WFRC that they're working in Weaver County and Davis County, actually it's Weaver and Davis, um, with Hill Air Force Base. And they have the Falcon Hill, uh, reconstruction, which is gonna be a big economic event uh, where they're gonna be tearing down some of the, the base and putting in new housing and new actually economic development items in there. Not just like commissary or anything like that. It's gonna be for the actual public. And they're reconstructing that. So just for our information, that's something we can be looking at as a cooperative help with that also. And the chamber is having their Fourth of July celebration on the fourth. And I would like to just say the one thing I love about that event is the cardboard regatta. And, and so if there is, um, now if we've got some kind of a trail out there on that other side, that's gonna be perfect. They're just wondering if we can maybe possibly get in at a different point to bring the boats, the cardboard boats, and set it up where we normally do it. If there's any way that maybe we can talk to DuSets and see if we can maybe use their ground or maybe putting the, um, boats in at that point versus the point where we've done it in the past.
You might wanna go up there on, on the side that we have property up further. Go up that trail and just look at it and see if that's a, an option to get in from the, it'd be getting in from the opposite side.
Right.
But you could probably pull into that field, you know, with trucks and trailers and stuff. I would think so. It's pretty large.
We're supposed to be meeting next Tuesday morning to actually see it.
I would at least go over and look at it.
And so if we can, if it's a feasibility, they would like to do it that way this year, is on that other side.
So you got your boat ready?
I don't think I'm, I would make it.
Just use the box, your Tesla came.
I just. My, my. I don't wanna ruin my, my batteries. But, but you know what? I would love to. I've wanted to every year, but this year I just can't, hell twice. So just take that out this year. I want to so bad. You don't know how bad I want to.
Oh, dear. Sorry. My computer went to go to sleep. Do you have an update on the car show?
Any, what's that?
Do you have a car show update?
Oh, yeah. The car show, we had.
Two hundred and forty, right?
How many? Three?
Two forty is what.
Two forty or two fifty, somewhere there. And we had, well, according to the Morgan Weaver, or Weaver Morgan Health Department, we only had anyway, nine hundred ninety-nine plus participants. Actually, there was more than that. We had probably a group of, I'd say, two to three thousand come through there that day. And not all at one time, but they were in and out. I had to leave early, so I did not see who won it. I just wasn't feeling it that day. So, um, anyway, it was a good event. And, uh, I'm appreciative of what they did. The burnout was actually good. There was one worry that I had when all of a sudden one of the cars just turned when they were doing it. Luckily, it stopped, but it turned. It wouldn't have hit anybody. It would have hit just the equipment, the speaker equipment. And, uh, they stopped it and then it was, it was good, but, um, other than that, it was very good.
Did it turn? Because the barriers would have come.
Yeah, it.
So it turned and it would have missed the barriers? It turned?
Oh, no. It was all contained. It was all contained. It was, yeah, you were right by me, Mike. Um, it turned and went towards the chain link fence. And so it was contained, completely contained. But it was a pretty good event. Mike was there showing off his vehicles, and I love him every year. And it was his nephew, or no, it's your son. He had a great one there, but he didn't enter it. I would have voted for that in a minute. And it was just a, it was a you tell him about it.
On the back of his truck that he had entered.
And so.
Got a lot of attention.
Yeah, it got a lot of attention. I would have, I, and that was great. And, uh, the flyover was fantastic. They actually flew over twice. Yeah, it got a lot of attention. I would have, I, and that was great. And, uh, the flyover was fantastic. They ca, actually flew over twice. And, uh, um, we appreciate that every year. And part of the funds that we do collect actually goes to help pay for the gas for that. And so they can do that. And so there was a lot that went on this last weekend and I loved every second. If you've never been there, make sure you come next year. Next year, if we can get it to work, we want to have that day and a half event. Where we can get people into the hotel, maybe and stay. But we had people from all over, all over. Not just Morgan County residents, but I'm surprised at how many Morgan County residents are vehicle buffs. So.
I know the, uh, website said it stopped at two, but when you drove by, there were like nine.
Oh yeah.
Didn't look like it closed at two.
I, I think it was later than two. I think it was. But anyway, a lot of people had a big time.
Trips to take stuff home.
Yeah, that's true.
We have four, four cars down there and only three drivers.
Yeah. So anyway, there's a lot that goes on in putting this together, but, uh, a shout out to the volunteers that did all that. And they really did a great job this year. Again, in my opinion.
Well organized and well carried out.
And they start on the new one again, probably in about November, December, and they start working towards the next year. And tomorrow night I'll find out all that they were able to bring in as far as money for the sponsors and as far as, the raffle, I mean, the, the, uh, charity and so forth, and then all the expenses. Okay?
Did you want me to reach out to DuSets or do you want me to wait till you do a site visit?
I would like, well, let me go look at that.
Go check on the other side.
I'll check on the other side first.
Okay.
Okay, and then, and then I'll let you know. Okay? Other than that, that's all I've got for now.
Okay, so there's, uh, in Cog. At Cog yesterday, there was some sad news that UDOT approved like the first traffic light in Morgan County. So that was kinda sad news. Um, they're gonna be putting a traffic light at some point. They don't know when, but over here at the, uh, freeway on North Ramp here in town.
Oh, really?
So they, they didn't say, just cause when people, they were saying about four o'clock, you can't get off the freeway because people are just constantly going. Well, it was, everybody was off yesterday.
How far are they gonna expect?
Description how they did it. I, it was like, they're gonna stop it on the east side of the off and on ramp by the, uh, towards old highway. And then they're gonna stop at just west, I guess it'd be southwest of Front Street, so that people can get off. So it's only for getting off the freeway. And then all of a sudden, then people can go back there, so.
Can I have him come present on that?
I think it'd be great. Cause I was like, I was, they were trying to make sense on all these lights. I'm like, this sounds like a disaster. I'm gonna keep getting off. So that was my comment. Cause it sounded terrible, but there, they didn't have a timeframe, but UDOT did, um, approve putting a light, an intersection, so.
They have already approved it in Mountain Green, unfortunately, but it's an even less smart location. So, just for the.
The T intersection.
Is it a T intersection at Canyon View Commercial West? It's not even the Paul Drive where there's a four-way.
That doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't.
That, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, the developer has to put it in once they hit a certain occupancy.
So why are they putting it there versus where we really need it? I like Highland Drive.
Because there wasn't a developer, it, it has to do with the developer covering the cost of it and that was the section of it that was being done when they.
They're taking advantage of the money.
We argued against it when they came in and told them it was a stupid idea because it's not even in a place that's really helpful. And it was just gonna back up traffic elsewhere, but. Guess that's another discussion. And, and to me, another reason to get the interchange in place so that.
If the interchange goes in, UDOT said that they wouldn't require it.
Do you have happy news to go with your crappy news? Do you have happy news?
I did have one thing that, that, um, came up as I was around the neighborhood last week was, uh, last year. So I just wanted to kind of get this out there so we can bring it back up was, um, the Milton Arena, um, sprinkling or whatever for the dust and whatnot. I guess our sprinklers are watering the hay again.
Yeah, it'd be thankful.
So, well.
Oh no, Brett's got that taken care of.
It's still watering.
Is this the thrasher?
Yep, so it's still watering the, the hay.
Still watering the hay and it, and it's still dusting because I bet it didn't get, I bet it didn't get coated with this miracle coating.
I, I don't think, going, thinking back into those meetings, I don't think anything was ever, no direction was given as far as what to use. Did, did you?
Well, yeah, Brett said he had the miracle.
Well, he talked about the mag water, but I don't think it ever got approved to be.
We did. We said, then, then do it, but do something.
It's still, yeah, it's still, I don't think it ever got done.
Okay, that was not a positive. I asked, I asked for.
Well, I'm getting there.
Oh, okay.
Did you get the park paved?
No, the park, people are loving the pavement. I'm waiting for the first set of domes to show up. But no, people were just amazed and people are, they're happy about deep creek. You know, even though they got shut down for a while, they, I think they took a breath and are appreciative of a nice road up there. Um, um, probably the best news was on the truck pulls. Um, Lance Prescott reached out and he wanted to personally thank the county, the commission, um, for the work that we did, um, Brett, everything for getting it. He says, the, the promoter they use this year was very happy with the turnout. He said the Lions Club, they made, they made around seven thousand dollars for the Lions Club. Um, they haven't finalized actually the numbers of attendees, but, um, the pollers really liked going the other direction because we had several over three hundred foot polls, which we've never been able to get a three hundred foot pole because they'd stop before the gate. Um, one actually bumper kissed the, the berm, got three hundred and twenty foot pole, so. Um, they were, they were thrilled. They're looking forward to next year and maybe, uh, see what we can do to make it even a little bit bigger and better. And, but they were very happy with, with what happened there. So, um, they wanted to express their gratitude to the county. So, that's what I have.
I just have, uh, one, I went to the Weber Human Services elderly folks dinner in the park down in Roy and watched the old folks dance. It was, it was fun. It was, it's good to see three hundred and fifty old people get together and have lunch and they had a country singer and they gave away twenty-five to fifty dollar drawing prizes and you would have thought they won the lottery.
I say, how old do you have to go to?
You could have gone. You would have fit right in, Blaine.
Seventy-one years old, I guess I could.
No, it was, it was fun. It was a good time. Okay, well, I'll look for a motion to, uh.
Um, ask one more thing. I had a constituent reach out to me and she's concerned the, the Dropbox to mail your letters at Sinclair was removed. So there's no place to mail a letter in Mountain Green?
The P O box, post office box? Okay, I can go talk to the postmaster. I do not. You said it was at the Sinclair station? Okay, I will check on that tomorrow.
Okay, well, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, we're outta here.